Yes, I hadn't heard anything about that.
I guess it wasn't as bad as the 10 squad cars in the front made it look.
Hey Frank, how are you?
Having appointed time of 5:30 arrived, I would like to call the committee to hold for Tuesday, April the 12th, 2022 to order. Would you please join me with the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie. Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman DeCinso.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, Aquorum is present.
Thank you. I would accept the motion to approve the March 29th.
The move.
Second. Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Treasurer, would you like to present a Treasury report?
Thank you, Chair Williams. The corporate fund in the month of March had a beginning balance of forty-eight million, five hundred fifty-eight thousand, thirty dollars. We took in total receipts of thirteen million, seventy-two thousand, nine hundred sixty-five dollars. We had total disbursements in the month of March of eight million, seven hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance in the month of March of fifty-two million, nine hundred eleven thousand, three hundred twenty-three dollars. Chair Williams, of that ending balance, the ending balance of the ARPA money included in that was fourteen million, five hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven dollars. This concludes my report. Chair Williams.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept the Treasurer's report as submitted.
So moved. Uh, second.
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding the OMB contract report? There are none. Are there any presentations? Mr. Mayor.
We have a proclamation, Mr. Chair.
Proclamation.
Up guys. Right up here behind the mirror.
This is almost an annual occurrence for us, recognizing this particular great schools, but it's always a pleasure to recognize our young people in our community and especially we acknowledge them when they do well on the courts, but also off the courts. And I'll read this proclamation where it reads, "Whereas more than sixty years ago, Christ the King School has been dedicated to empower children in a Catholic faith journey through academic excellence and inspiring lifelong service within a loving parish community. And whereas we are here with residents of Springfield and members of the Christ the King family to celebrate and recognize a group of young men for their athletic accomplishments during their 2021-2022 basketball season. And whereas the Christ the King Cougars, seventh grade boys' basketball team showed off skills, teamwork, and strength, finishing their 2021-2022 season with a 27-2 record. And whereas the lucky 13 roster consisting of Dylan Cloud, Ethan Moore, Mackenzie Doe, Alex Gathard, Mike Gresh, Cooper Hartman, Austin Johannes, Jack Johannes, Kai Johnson, Miles Montgomery, Austin Rutter, Ethan Stubbs, and Nate Swainy worked together using their individual abilities and talents to create a dynamic and unified team. And whereas the seventh grade Cougars ended their season with a roar, defeating Peoria Limestone Walters 58-23 in the Illinois Elementary School Association IESA's Class 7-1A championship, bringing home the first place title to Springfield and Christ the King. And whereas these young athletes' love for the game and individual skills were brought out through the mentoring and coaching by volunteer staff, including head coach Paul Hartman Jr. and assistant coaches Emily Core and Todd DeJames?
Correct.
Oh, good. And whereas we also recognize Principal Pam Fahy, Pastor Father Chris House, Athletic Director Bob Hamilton, and the Christ the King's faculty and administration for their constant guidance of these student athletes. And whereas we also thank the parents, guardians, and other family members who worked together to ensure these young men not only made it to practices and games, but ensured these students succeeded in the classroom, as well as on the court, and continued on their journey of a faith-filled, centered life. And whereas we congratulate this young team on this great achievement of their first-place victory. And together as a community, we look forward to watching this team grow into their eighth year or eighth grade year. Now therefore, I, James O. Langfelder, Mayor of the City of Springfield, Illinois, together with our city council and residents, do hereby proclaim that Tuesday, April 12th, 2022, shall be Christ the King Basketball, Boys Basketball Day in the City of Springfield and call upon all citizens to recognize the 2021-2022 Christ the King Cougars and their coaches for their great achievement. Congratulations.
We'd like to thank Mayor Langfelder, members of the council, and a special thank you to Alderman Hanauer for the invitation and taking a few moments to honor these young men for the effort that they put in this past year. Mayor Langfelder was right. About two years ago, we were here for an eighth-grade state championship that I had the pleasure of being a part of, not knowing that the world was about to change. And these young men lost, like many other student athletes, an entire year of competition and work, and yet they persevered through personal loss, through uncertainty. But their dedication to the game, their willingness to come together as a team, and the faith-based daily reinforcement of all of that really, I think, contributed to their success. And we are extremely proud of them and grateful for this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Parents. Pictures, guys. Quick.
You guys don't want him in your picture.
I got you. Oh, I know a couple of these youngsters.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations.
Good job, guys.
Congrats, guys.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Well, congratulations to Christ the King. Can we go back just for a moment to the OBM contract reports?
Sure.
I have a question. If anyone's here from Public Works, we've got one item on the OBM contract reports that's treatment of forty-seven sweet gum trees. I think that's a highly popular activity, and I think some of us are getting requests on how constituents, property owners, homeowners can get on the list to have their sweet gum trees treated with, when they flower out, so that the sweet gums, balls themselves don't form. Nate, can you give us some advice on that?
Yeah, so we actually just did a test period this year along Walnut Street. We figured that was a logical location due to the, we just converted it with bike lanes as well as it's heavy pedestrian traffic as well.
Excellent choice.
Surprise, surprise.
So, but however, we did utilize a contractor in order to do that at this time, and you have to do it at the right time, and it is an annual treatment. And it doesn't totally eliminate the gumballs. It can reduce it up to sixty percent. However, and you have to do the injections every four inches around, in essence, the base of the tree. However, like I said, you do have to treat it at the right time, right? We did hit it at the perfect time in order to treat it. How, and that's basically, and it should reduce them by approximately thirty to thirty, up to sixty percent. And we wanted to test it out to see if it makes sense so that we don't necessarily have to remove the trees. And so this was a test period. It needs to happen right now before the buds start to elongate. So they really need to be treated right away. And I can give you that contact information, but really it's getting a little bit, a little bit past that, and we just wanted to do a test period to see if it's really worth our while.
So we're going through a test period right now. The city has paid for it, and we don't have a sign up yet for residents who might want to have their trees tested. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
We don't, yeah. And we just wanted to see how it works this year before we recommend people spending money on this annual treatment.
Okay, thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Okay. Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I guess the question is, is we, I brought up a program that we, to, to, to work through to try to get rid of some of the gumball trees. I still think it's pertinent to move forward if we got people that want to do it. And I kind of wanted to go based on a prior, a prior way that we did it, you know, project. Can I get information on that? And we'll bring it forward?
Yeah, we can take a look at it. I believe the previous program was three hundred dollars.
Two fifty.
Two fifty, thank you. It was around two fifty. However, I estimate it's approximately two thousand dollars a tree potentially to have removed, especially with the size of the gumball trees. However, we did want to test out this, this method, so we don't necessarily have to remove them. However, and also we're battling the Emerald Ash Bore disease, so we're, we don't have the capacity necessarily to do it in-house, so we would have to probably contract that at this time.
Well, my, my only point is, is I think that what, what we got approval from the council for was like two hundred and fifty thousand of ARPA, and that would get roughly around, I'll figure about two hundred trees, I think, is what we figured. And I would like to move forward if people want to get rid of them, you know, that'd be worth it. So if I could get that information, I'll just pass it on, and we'll, we'll see what we can do here. And, and people have, have the ability to opt out. They, you know, it's a sign up. And my understanding was there was a sign up prior to, you know, in the last project, program, so it, I don't know if we put those people first or, or what, how we handle it. But I'm kind of letting you guys give me the direction since you guys ran it before, okay, Nate?
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll take a look at it and come up with a plan. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other presentations at this time? Mr. Clerk?
Yes. You've got South Town Construction Training Center? You going to wait until the ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to wait until the ordinance?
Do you want to call the ordinance?
Well, yeah, let's move the ordinance up if he could read the ordinance.
We need a motion for that.
Yes. Second. Been moving properly, second, to bring the ordinance early and bring it up so they can go with the presentation.
Yeah, what's the number?
I'm sorry. It is. Just towards the back.
One five seven.
One five seven?
One fifty.
Okay. Two zero two two one five seven.
An ordinance authorizing execution of subsubsequent agreement number 21-SR-0008 for South Town Construction and Bone Training Center utilizing the city's community development block grant funds in the amount not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Some of. Say. I was sent for a debate. I'm sure we'll have some questions. Any questions or discussion?
Do we have a presentation?
Yes. You can come up with your presentation at this.
Mr. Chairman, I, I heard Alderman from Ward Two make the motion. Who made the second?
I said.
You did? Thank you.
Thank you.
That was for debate.
Can I just, point of order, I think when you're chairing, can you second a motion?
Well, okay, somebody second it.
I'll second it. I just, I want to make sure.
So note that Alderwoman Conley is the second. Okay. You can proceed when you're ready, Mr. Pitts.
All right. Well, first of all, I thank you all for this opportunity to share the mission that we, the thing that I hold very dear to my heart. And I'm looking forward to, to share with you all what we do. First of all, my name's Calvin Pitts, and I am the, one of the instructors at South Town Construction Training Center, as well as the founder. You can, do I have the ability to? So we'll start at the beginning. South Town Construction Training Center was established in 2013. We are a community-based, not-for-profit, 501(c)(3) organization that focuses on the betterment of oneself by providing participants with the necessary soft skills and residential construction knowledge they will need to stimulate both professional and personal growth. Our mission is to increase training and, and the employment opportunities to low-income and disadvantaged minority in the construction industry. Okay, and this is our basic outline. You know, safety is a big deal for us. All of our participants are certified with the OSHA 10 certification. We have a lot of classroom instruction and testing. One of the big pieces of what we do is the on-the-job training. We actually get men and women on projects and get them engaged, involved in, you know, not only learning or practicing the things that they've learned in books, but also be able to affect the community and the people in those areas. And, you know, we also attend local job fairs. And one thing that I look forward to this training doing is to be able to create a hub where contractors can come, you know, and if they need some good, hard-working, responsible young men that happens to be a minority, we're going to have them to provide for them. Next slide, please. Okay, and one of the certifications that I, I have is the MC3, which is the Multi-Craft Core Curriculum. The MC3 curriculum was a curriculum that was developed in Washington, DC by the National Labor Trades. The focus of this curriculum, you know, basically in high school and college and post-graduates, but the goal is to be able to reach the inner-city communities, to make connections with the kids that are not necessarily college-bound, but still have a lot of great potential. So that's the, the purpose of that. And so it just kind of gives a guideline of some of the things that we cover in that. Next slide, please. And this is kind of the, the rough of it, you know, in Level Two, after about sixty hours, typically, in that case, in ideally, you would have contractors that are in a position where individuals are needed, and they will come and say, well, you know, I can, I can hire him and her, and then we can kind of get people moving into the employment industry at that rate. You know, it gives them the knowledge validation, and then that way they are qualified to interview and get past the application process, which for some of us is a big deal. I'm not a great applicator and test taker. Next, next slide, please. And, you know, more of the curriculum, we talk about some of the things that we do. And these are all, you know, they, they seem basic, but they're very big deals, especially with the, the individuals that I serve. You know, you would think tool identification and use, you say, ah, you know, that's, that's not very needed. But, you know, there are some, some individuals that's been in my training that swung a hammer for the first time, you know. So a lot of, a lot of the things that we take for granted, or we think that everybody get that, you know, growing up, you think that everybody is, you know, getting the preparation that they need to grow into, you know, a skilled trade, if you will. But a lot of the individuals out in the areas that I serve are, you know, they face similar backgrounds as I did. My father was killed when I was thirteen, so I didn't have that mill, you know, role, role model to put tool belts around me and go and help somebody put some siding on in the weekend, those type of things. So to be able to give individuals this knowledge, and then when you're testing, if you can identify some tools and you know how to use a tool, that will put you ahead of some people as well, you know, because there will be other folk that don't have that common knowledge. And they will get into basic home repairs at all levels. You know, we, on some of the things, and you'll see the slide as we move forward, on one of the prints that we have, we're gonna, you know, basically touch, you know, every phase of residential construction. But, you know, when we talk about the basic home repairs, and we talk about training ten, twenty guys, you'd be like, well, it's going to be really hard for everybody to get the understanding of how you change a P-trap in a bathroom, or how you, you know, can do some of the similar things that is going to take one person potential or skills, or, you know, basically. So our individuals will wear body cams, and we won't crowd out areas. We won't waste a lot of time with individuals huddling around trying to learn something. Everybody will have their specific assignment, and at the end of the day, or that first, that next morning, we can review film that everybody created during what, performing whatever task it was that they did. And one of the other goals is to be able to put some of these videos on, some how-to YouTube videos, so that we can show some other folk as well how to do some of these simple repairs as homeowners. And then, you know, just multiple things. They'll build some decks. We'll learn how to, you know, determine rate and rise. We'll build some stairs. We'll do all that kind of cool stuff. It's going to be really fun. And one of the goals of the training I look forward to is the solar install, the solar training, the solar install, because we know that, you know, that's where things are going. Energy efficiency is going to be a really big part of what we do. We teach our students how to sew the envelope, and even in their current home, you will be able to save money by, you know, weatherizing your house, if you will, to understand some of the simple methods that can be taken to, to make sure that that happens. And, you know, one of the bigger pieces is the self-care. The construction, the tool identification, putting, you know, some fixtures together, or building stairs. I haven't had very many of the people that go through our training, and I'm probably at about ninety to a hundred individuals that I've served up to this point. And I haven't had very many that don't understand how to do something if you take the time and, and have the patience to show them. But a lot of the self-care, a lot of the things that our youth are missing, you know, how to love yourself, how to respect yourself, and then in turn, it's going to develop and create that respect that we need for each other. Teach them that many hands make light work, and you're going to have to work together. You know, I don't have very many assignments that I put individuals on by theirself, if you will. You know, we have A, B, C, and D teams, and we have accountability partners in our training. If one person don't show up, I need that other person that's in his team to explain to me what's happening and why he's not there. And it's kind of the accountability, accountability piece. Call him at 10 o'clock and make sure he's laying down. So, and then financial literacy, that's a big piece, too. We teach them, you know, because my, my, my hopes are that they get into a trade and make a whole bunch of money, you know, so we want them to be able to handle it. We want them to, to be able to create some generational wealth, and that can be done simply with knowledge and knowing what to do with it. A lot of them's made money. It's just a matter of what, what do you do with it when you get it. So the leadership training, that's going to be huge. You know, we teach leadership in everything that we do, but I start with the definition of leadership. And a true leader is one that removes, that removes the obstacles that will prevent someone else from doing their job. So even in leadership, you know, it's basically a service, and we make them understand the purpose of that. So in reservays and mock interviews, those are all big pieces in our training. We had, in our, one of our last trainings, we had members from the IBEW Building Trades, and, you know, we were able to do some mock interviews, and one of our individuals tested number one in the interview process, and he's in his second year at CWLP. So that's one of my, yeah, testimonies. Next slide, please. And then our target population, eighteen, thirty years old. The guideline was typically eighteen to twenty-four, but then I think back, I was thirty when I started, so I think it's still hope at that age. And, you know, and I, I don't discriminate, if you will. A lot of the trainings, you have to have the minimum qualifications. You have to have driver's license. You have to have GEDs. That's not a requirement to start my training. If those things are not had, it is definitely going to be a part of your implementation, implication plan. We definitely need you moving forward to make those things happen. And a lot of times, you know, the tutors and things that we have in place and the encouragement that you give these individuals, and I've witnessed being able to encourage and push to see, you know, just those things happen and that, you know, or just little things that really boost that person and encourage him for the next steps that he needs to take. Low-income individuals, returning citizens, disadvantaged community members, and of course, the homeless community. One of the brothers that I had didn't have a place to live when he got into training, and he ended up getting a journeyman card and working on a project. And I think his salary, I had to pay him fifty-four dollars an hour, so I know that there's hope. Next slide, please. Okay, and this is one of the projects that we, Mr. Parker and I, we took, made some drawings, took some plans, and I don't have my set in front of me, and that's kind of small. But we're going to be doing some stuff. We're going to, we're going to demolish and rebuild some stairs, some decks. We're going to pour some concrete. We're going to, you know, do some, it's going to actually need an entire HVAC system. This particular house currently have electric heat, baseboard heat, and we know that today's time, that's not a very efficient method to heat your house up. So that's going to be one of the things that we do. It's, that's going to be a really fun one, and so on. So I'll let you guys take a, take a look at that, and I will, I have some prints I can share with you if you guys have any questions. Next slide, please. And this is the budget for that property, and it's probably going to be a little different. I will have a pass out that I need to give, give some printouts that I will share with each of you so that you can review those. The initial plans that we sent was, plans that we, was email that I had received from the architect, Mr. Parker, and some had been, we sit down, and we were able to move some numbers around because we can minus the labor on a lot of these projects, on a lot of these things that we're doing. So we were able to get the number down quite significantly. So, and after, you know, the, the presentation was, was noted to me, I took time, and we went through the other houses as well. So all of them are now currently broke down, and they will make a little more sense to you all. Next slide. You can tell. Thank you. And then this is another project that we pulled numbers on. This is, thank you very much. This is 409 East Owls, and it has, it, we have some really cool things going on with that one. And I don't think that I have the drawings. If you don't mind, next, next slide, please. Yeah, and that's another one of the problems. It doesn't even have the slides on it, but all of the numbers are there. And if you don't mind, next slide, we will, I will give you all, give you all a sheet, a copy of the budget, guys, for your review. But I just want to make sure that we're all, you know, understanding that our, our main focus and the goal is, is the, the service that we're going to be able to, to, to give to individuals in this community, the life, life-changing service that we're going to give. And, yes, please. Thank you very much. This is, Mr. Parker's always there when you need him, too. This is, Mr. Parker is always there when you need him too. Yeah, so, and that, that should be a copy of a lot of the forums that we're talking about here. Next slide, please. Yep, and that's the continued budget. And you guys will get a copy of that. Okay, and then you can, well, this is, this is just a video of different things that we've done for the sake of time. You make the decision. I, I like watching them, but you don't have to. But it's some before and afters, some, this is actually my office and training center that was on South Grand, vacant over 20 years. That's me planning even when the lights wasn't working. You didn't tell me how much time I had either, Mr. Chair.
Well, you're at the end.
Okay, so, 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 so thank you. Thank you all for your time. And I'm, I will welcome any questions at this point.
Any questions?
Real brief, go ahead, go ahead. Mr. Pitts, you're gonna rehabilitate three properties, correct, that are dilapidated? And how many, how many individuals do you expect to train?
So in this, this cohort with the budget we have, we're gonna train 10 individuals for 40 hours. Originally, I said 20 individuals and they were gonna work 20-hour weeks. But, you know, with COVID and they're talking about how things could be escalating and the space that we're working on now, in now, I think that if we could have a full 40-hour week for 10 individuals, I think it would be definitely a good, good choice at this point.
Okay, Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, I'm, I'm very, that was a good presentation, really explained your program there in South Town. I'm, you know, very happy that you're there in South Town. I think this program will help us take steps in closing two gaps, our workforce disparity as well as our homeownership disparity with getting some of these homes rebottled and stuff. And we got more. So, you know, with, with these individuals, you know, there's, there's gonna be plenty of houses to really do. And what timeframe are you looking to flip one to get it, to get it in living order?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm looking now at a June 1 start date. And, you know, with 10 individuals and we'll have a couple, at least a couple of instructors assisting us on these projects. And with proper, proper scheduling and all, I can see, it's, we're gonna have a five-month training. So I can say that for sure, you know, they, they will be done.
I appreciate you.
And also too, one of the goals as well with the financial literacy piece that we offer, and, you know, my, my prayer is to be able to prep one of these individuals, one or two of these individuals to put themselves in a position to actually purchase one of these properties. And if there's any incentives or ways or something or any ideas that anyone may have that could assist us in that process, that would be awesome because I know it's a life-changing situation when a person does that.
That's a great point, because I know we have a great program with our Justin Peterson. They do work with, with non-traditional lenders and, and really push to, to create homeownership for low-income individuals. So I can see a great partnership as well as with some other partners in the community.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Hanau.
Thank you. Calvin, thank you for, for your presentation. So when you, when you flip the house, then do you, do you keep the profits? Or does it come back to the city since we're, since we're doing donate, since we're doing a grant? You know, and you've already had classes, you've had a class before, right? Did you have a class before?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Okay, do, so some of the material, and I thank you for the, the bigger read. I, I had a hard time reading that first one. But so are some of these already, you know, the, the training stuff, do you already have it or are we, we getting, getting you new stuff along with it?
Yeah, so a lot of it, we have on that spreadsheet. We do have a request for additional laptops. I had, I typically run a class the size of 10. And we had the 10 laptops. Two of them was given to participants at completion because they didn't have them, but they were moving forward and I felt that it was necessary. That was put in with the focus of, because you notice on there, I have 20 participants. So in the event that there's 10, that 12 will be two. And the dollars are gonna be funneled through our accountant. Everything is gonna be, you know, documented. So if we save here, we over, you know, gotta, gotta adjust the budget there. I think that we'll be able to all, make it all make sense. And then as far as the completion of the properties, I tried, tried to twist the mayor's arm. I thought we should have given one of the participants a house. But the money's gonna come back to a bucket and it's gonna help with the continuation of what we do. We wanna hopefully be able to continue to, we will be able to continue to train other individuals and get into other houses and redevelop, so.
Thank you.
Alderman Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first question is more, I guess, of the Department of Office of Planning and Economic Development. I don't know who to address that through this evening. But is, since CDBG funds are being utilized, is it a reimbursement program? Kind of help me better understand how that process will work.
The funds that we're using are CDBG CV funds. That was passed, I can't even think what month that was. We, we presented to the council, this was one of the allocations. So this $400,000 is already in the plan that was awarded sometime.
I understand that part, but like, how, how is the money distributed? Is it like, are, are regular invoices submitted to the city and there's a reimbursement?
A reimbursement program.
Okay, so it's as we go along?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That answers that question. And then secondly, just out of curiosity, does, I know that a number of the unions throughout town have training programs. Are you partnering, do you partner with them?
So I am, I am a 22-year member of the IBW Local 193. The MC3 curriculum is only issued through the labor trades. I've had relationships with labor throughout. They all smile. I haven't had as many people accepted into the trades as I would like to see. And, and one thing that I always do is I always speak up for the person that don't have a voice. But as far as relationships are concerned, I go to building trade meetings and I haven't had any personal issues and haven't heard of it.
Are they a partner with this project? That's really what it is.
Yeah, well, yes, they are, yes, they are the developers. So that format that I showed you after so many hours, and then they get into the work experience and they can bypass the interview process. Now, this is, this is something that, from my understanding, it's something that is, each labor trade, each, each city or county or whatever, they can decide how they wanna do or don't wanna do. My first approach will be to every labor trade after this meeting. I will approach them all. And my goal will be asking for a retired guy that don't have the legs anymore, but he still have the knowledge, send the kid up there and tell the kid what to do when he get there. And, and it's really, really effective. So I'm optimist, I'm cautiously optimistic. You know, I think that, you know, we will get things. I mean, it's, why, why wouldn't you? You know, I think it's a great, great thing. And they'll win too, because if we can create some good, good labor for these guys, it would help them increase state minority representation as well.
Alderman Redpath.
Mr. Pitts, what, what's the difference between your program and the one that Billy Bishop has put together? And in, in addition to that, the one that goes, that is being performed by the Lincoln Land Community College for the career trades? What's the difference?
Yeah, well, so I can't answer it fully because I can't really confess to studying their programs. I have not done that. But I do know that what I do, I'm, yeah. Yeah, I, well, I'm gonna be careful what I say. But what I do and the people that I serve and my approach, I, I, I think it's second to none, you know? I can't, I don't knock anyone else's program. The difference between my program and Lincoln Land's program is they have probably a $5 million budget, you know? And, and they have a lot of support, you know? I think the difference with me being the founder of South Town Construction Training Center, I push, you know? And I, and I also recognize that some of the things that are set up are, are not necessarily set up for us. And I point things out because I do want to see the minorities grow in our labor trades. But I want to see, you know, we, in order for that to happen, we're gonna have to see change.
Isn't that the, isn't that the goal of Mr. Bishop's program? Is to, for enhancing minority participation?
Yeah, again, I haven't studied it, but Mr. Bishop's a great guy and he's doing great things. So, yes, I, I don't knock that. But I, I tell you that if Mr. Bishop trained and he got 20 people into the union this year, I think that would be absolutely awesome. But I think that we could use 20 more. So if we can get, you know, some, someone else doing what he does and you can multiply it and there's some other people that wanna do it too, I encourage you to support every one of them because we all need it.
So I got another question for you. You say you got an interaction with the, with the building trades, but I have a letter sitting in front of me from the Central Illinois Labor's Pension Fund that says that you owe them $4,409 for pension, welfare, and annuity funds. Can you explain that?
Well, no, I, I would rather, if you don't mind passing me that thing, I'll, I'll show you. I'll explain it to you. I did a project and I was a signatory labor contractor. And I paid my members and I actually overpaid our members. And I got this audit and from the first form, and I'll, I'll pass it around. If you got time, since you answered it, I want you to go ahead and take a look at what we got going on. I'll, I'll pass it around because the fact of the matter is, after the audit that I received, after getting an auditor to make me understand the language and how to cipher through it, I went through the audit and I actually overpaid the pension fund, $10,700. I called their attorney just last Friday because I told him that I was gonna be presenting this week. And he sent me a letter back stating that the thing is, the, the response is in the hands of a different attorney at this point. And it's been over two months since I've sent my response, which is out of the time that individuals usually respond. But I'll, I'll give you this first page, which will, this is, you know, you read the $47. And if you don't want it, I can probably read it at the same time.
It's up to you, yeah. I just wanna give you an opportunity to respond.
I appreciate that. And I, I know that there was some noise going on at one point. And, you know, and I can tell you where it all derived from too. And I'm done because I think it's all, all need to be clear. But my letter to him after probably about at least a week of my time, because the audits are like really thick and, and it's nothing but numbers. So after getting an individual to come over and spend time with me to make me understand how, how to read it and what it is saying, it said, "Hi, John." John Lay was the attorney. Said, "Please see the attached supportive documentation. In various cases, it will point out that the audit findings were inaccurate, specifically as it relates to money owed to the Central Labor's Pension Fund by Bone LLC for work, for the work period of 2016 and 17. During the audit review, documentation was discovered that showed a pattern of hours being altered in an attempt to absorb the numerous overpayments made by Bone LLC to the pension fund. In one situation in particular, I had a laborer work a full month, 160 hours. And on the audit, it showed that I underpaid 40 hours, like he could have worked an additional 40 hours. And along with that, I had each of his pay stubs. And then I had the, the pension fund receipt showing that that month was owed and that month was paid and it all zeroed out. And I have audit information. It, there's a form on here that says it was private information. But from my standpoint, any of you all that wanna see that entire audit and its findings, I would be more than willing to share it with you. And I, I don't really understand the situation, why, you know, why this came up like that, other than the fact that I am probably one of a few minorities in this city that I will bid a project that's prevailing rate. And I will, I'm not, you know, opposed to making money, just like every, everyone else does. And when I get individual, I have an individual that works with me now, been with me a couple of years. He's 56 years old. He's not union potential. But if he works with me every week at $20 an hour and I get an opportunity to pay him $64 an hour, I'm gonna pay him $64 an hour. And I hope that makes sense to everybody.
Well, this, this letter came from the Central Illinois Labor's Pension Fund and was put together by Kent Day, the CPA, the executive director for the pension fund. And this came to me yesterday. So I think there's a little communication problem there because of your communications on Friday and then this is as of yesterday, so.
Yeah, so as far as the last email that I received from him was, they're still working on it. And two, two months, they're auditors. I am an electrician.
If you'd like, I'll give you the letter so you can see what he's saying if you, if you want a copy of that.
Yeah, well, I, I think that he should probably send it to me. But if you wanna share it, it wouldn't hurt, couldn't hurt.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, and I can also, I'll make a copy of my response. And again, anybody that wanna see the audit that was performed with my company and the findings that I have, I would be more than willing to share it because it's, you know, it means that much.
There's the letter for you, Calvin.
Thank you.
All right, Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. I just, Mr. Pitts, thank you for coming in tonight. Let's have some questions around the houses that you choose. And I, Alderman Donnelly got most of my questions and then kind of triggered some more. So how do you choose which houses you're gonna be working on?
Well, so we got a list last time and there was some, some listing. It's actually kind of a, kind of trial because we can't, you know, at some point, we'll be trusted to get some keys and look at some stuff, I guess. But we just give, was given a list of some houses that was in city's possession. And I don't know if, you know, you don't have a big selection. I'm not real sure what's there. But just let me know what's out there. We can go look at it. And, you know, ideally for me, I want to pick houses in the community that I grew up in because it's, I know not only will the, the individuals wanna trade, the kids in that neighborhood will see people working that look like them. And that also, you know, gets, gets wheels turning. So the two that we, two of the three that we selected this time is gonna be really good because they're gonna be things that we can, it's, it's gonna be high-profile as well because we're gonna be set up, we have our tent set up on every project, have our first aid stations and all that kind of stuff. And, and you can tell that we've been there after we leave. You know, it's not just wasting time. We, we, we produce good products. So that's gonna be good. And we're gonna be able to feed this pool that we're, we're looking forward to building so that we can continue. But ideally, you know, we're gonna find some, some properties and we're gonna better, you know, a neighborhood and the people in it.
So do you buy these then from the city?
I'm sorry?
Do, do you buy the houses from the city if they're on the, the cities? If they're owned by the city, do you buy them first and then rehab them? Or how, how does that process work?
No, I, these are, we, we're gonna be working on houses that otherwise would be torn down in a lot of cases. But to answer your question, no, I didn't buy them.
Okay, because we did have, actually, we had a woman who came into council, I can't remember if it was last week or last week, and talking about just having, taking a house off the city's demo list and, and doing work on it and then finding out that there were like back taxes owed and, and situations like that. So have you run into things like that?
In business, yeah, it's, it's not uncommon. But the properties that we are gonna do now are gonna be city-owned. And, you know, if that's a forward goal, you know, to, to create a pool that can purchase, rehab, resell, and, I mean, everybody win, it's...
So when you sell the house... So when you sell the house, is that the city selling it, or is that you selling it?
Yeah, so those are all things that are going to be worked out yet. I'm going to train and make them pretty.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So I guess I'm, and maybe actually our corporation counsel could help a little bit. Is there liability insurance that goes along with people working on houses that are owned by the city? I mean, I know, I mean, I appreciate this. I know the construction industry is also not a super safe industry always. I mean, accidents happen, and you're training people. So do we carry liability insurance on this, or is that an obligation of Mr. Pitts?
Yeah, that's a responsibility of the training.
Of your program, so you do have liability insurance for all the projects?
Yes, ma'am, anything that I do, we will.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
We don't want nobody hurt, though.
No, I don't either. I'm glad you're doing safety. I appreciate the, you know, the personal protection equipment and, you know, and that you're, obviously, that's a part of the training, but you know we've got to be, I mean, you're talking about working on city-owned property, so I, we want to.
Outside of self-care, that's probably the biggest part.
Sure it is. I've lifted a hammer before. I think it's a good thing to do.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. We've had, I think we need to kind of, we need to hold this, or we need, I'm concerned about going forward with it right now. We've had another contractor that was in the same position where there was issues with the benefits paid and all that. I would like to see that get cleaned up, number one. Number two, we need to, I guess, my question is, and I appreciate your service, but I want to make sure we're not getting into any issues and getting, you know, Calvin into issues. He's on our housing board or something like that. Can people that are on boards and commissions, are they allowed to accept money from the city? And I think that's something we probably need to look at, because to me, it does kind of give them an unfair advantage over other people. And because of that, I want to, I want to give Mr. Zirkle time to look that up, but I think we need to hold this until we get, you know, the benefit part dealt with, and then we can find out here, because the last thing I want is to go forward and get you in a bad position. I don't think you want that. And, you know, so I would just recommend that we hold it or time be.
If you don't mind, I'll comment on the Housing Advisory Board. It was a board that I was appointed on. I will let you know that to date, that has been an inactive board. We have not had one board meeting. So absolutely couldn't be any favoritism shown because of that appointment, if you will. And as it relates to the audit, I will tell you that the findings that the audit and I went through, I'm not concerned about that at all. I know that that's going to be okay. But in the event that I do owe $4,000, that's an issue with Bone LLC, and $4,000 is not a problem. The money wasn't the problem. I do know that if I don't owe it, but I want to say, sir, thank you. I just want to say that it is very important that you move with anything that involves engaging black people in anything, specifically construction, because we're so underrepresented, and the system is not going to, the way that things are going now, the way, whatever it is in place that's been there forever, our numbers has always been low. So you really need, I really hope that you guys will think outside the box, get some things moving that hasn't been moving, because the things that has been moving and the systems that we have been going by have our numbers under 1% represented in the construction industry. So that's just my thoughts on that.
Alderman Gregory.
So, thank you. I certainly, I was actually pulled up the article on Ferguson Booth when we did it. We did proceed with him understanding that he would pay, he would take on a debt that wasn't even his. In this event, I think we should move forward with it. I agree with Mr. Pitts on the urgency in our communities. Near and far, my community, all of us, we've got bad houses everywhere that need to be fixed. That situation, we're talking about a million dollars. This is $4,000 versus substantial movement for our communities. I'm fine with any contingency of ensuring that, you know, this has worked out before anything, but I think these are, you know, something that we, I don't think we should hold up because of this, and if it's $4,000 that he owes, you know, he's got an audit, we got a letter, we're not lawyers or whatever. That's something that's got to be worked out, just as Ferguson Booth is, and Ferguson Booth's still not built there. Nothing's happened with it.
Alderman Redpath.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table this ordinance.
There's a motion on the floor for debate.
A motion to table is in order, point of order, Corporation Counsel.
The motion to table is, takes precedence over a normal motion, so that may be acted upon if that's the desire of the committee.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second to table this ordinance. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Of those nay?
Nay.
Local vote, Mr. Chair.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Nay.
Alderman Williams.
Nay.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Aye.
Alderwoman D'Senso.
Aye.
Alderman McMiniman.
Nay.
Alderwoman Conley.
Aye.
Alderman Donilon.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
You have six ayes and three nays.
Thank you.
Free time.
Sure. Okay. Any more presentations or?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We have another large group here from the J.C.s that they would be, I think, roughly 40 ordinances from now, if we don't hold them now, if we don't hear them now. So I was wondering if we could take care of the J.C.s. They've got a fairly large group here.
What's the number, and we'll move it up. Take care of that. 153?
153.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
So it's been moved in second to move 220153 up for consideration of head of its regular schedule. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll proceed.
2022-153, an ordinance authorizing execution of a sponsorship agreement with payment in the amount of $40,000 to Springfield J.C.s for the Capitol City Celebration to be held downtown Springfield, June 30th through July 4th, 2022, for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Move for consent.
Second.
Debate.
Second.
So it's been motion in second to move it for debate, any discussion?
To move it for consent first.
I said consent.
Well, okay. Well, I want to debate it, so anything.
Yeah, that's fine. That's how the rules are.
Well, actually, I did look into this, and I don't mind that we have a conversation about it or even that it goes on the debate, but our actual rules state that a motion to take something off of consent after it's already been adopted for consent requires a majority vote also, so.
That's on the night of passage.
Yes, I was going to say, we're just sending it forward right now, consent or debate.
Well, to take it off of consent agenda requires a majority vote.
Well, we haven't consented yet. We just had discussion. You guys nominated.
No, we had a motion for consent, and then we had a motion for debate.
Like we do all the time.
So which one are we voting on first, Chair?
Point of parliamentary procedure, Mr. Corporation Counsel, could you clarify what our rule state regarding the consent agenda, since the motion was consent with a second? Thank you.
Certainly. You may recall that the, this is a little complicated, but when an item is placed on the consent agenda, it must be unanimous. So if there is a dissenting member, one member may require something to be placed on debate. The state law is very clear on that point about basically consent or omnibus votes. When that happens, that has to be unanimous. The city council has adopted a process where the committee is the one that considers debate or consent. If one member in the committee desires debate, then it automatically goes to debate.
Okay, that's fine then.
If it's on consent at city council, then it may be taken off with a majority vote under the rule, in other words, taken it separately.
And I may have misread the rule incorrectly. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
We've heard this a time or two.
Okay, so it's been motion in second for debate. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
About a discussion.
Mr. Chairman, can I have the person who made the motion and then the second, please?
I'll change my motion to debate.
Thank you.
Second.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. Did you get everything you need?
Yep. Thank you.
Now we'll go to, is there the motions that are tabled, Mr. Clerk?
Discussion.
We can allow them to talk?
We just voted on debate.
No, you just voted to put it on debate, Chairman.
Okay, I'm sorry. Anyone want to come up and present or discuss?
Yeah, they want to come up.
Hey, I asked them.
Hello. Hi. Hi. Thank you, Mayor Langfelder, City Council, Citizens of Springfield. We're here to discuss a grant proposal for the Capitol City Celebration, which you may or may not be aware of. We will move to the next slide here to discuss what we'll be speaking about today.
You have the clicker up there.
I don't know what to say.
Whichever you'd like to do.
Here we go. Perfect. All right, so we're going to tell you a little bit about who we are, what our plans for the development of this is, go into a quick summary, the financial layout, and then open it up for questions. Just so you are all aware of who is presenting in front of you today, my name is Ellen Thorson. I'm the president of the Springfield J.C.s. I'm joined by our treasurer, Patrick Meyer, CPA, as well as Emily Watts, our community vice president. I'll yield the floor to Emily.
Thank you so much, Ellen. So just a brief history. Can we go ahead and clicker? Beautiful. So a brief history on the J.C.s. Our chapter was chartered in Springfield in 1939, and we currently have 42 active members. We have quite a few of those with us, so if you are an active J.C., if you will, go ahead and stand real fast.
I'm happy to stand, so.
Thank you all so much. We are very active in our community currently. The J.C.s are a young persons leadership development organization, so we do community-based programs to help develop leadership skills within young people. The Capitol Street Celebration was founded in 1998 to supplement the downtown city fireworks, and then in 2007, the J.C.s did take over the fireworks as well. Unfortunately, in 2016, we were rained out, which took out about a $30,000 nest egg that we had accumulated over the years. And then right after that, we were knocked down again with COVID. We've been able to continue the tradition of fireworks in downtown by partnering with the Levitt Amp Music Series, so we've been able to continue that tradition, but we really believe that Springfield should be a destination event for the Fourth of July weekend because we are the state capital, and our city deserves that. So I will bring Ellen back to the floor to tell you a little bit about what we have envisioned.
Thank you, Emily. So whenever we're looking at envisioning the future of the Capitol City Celebration, we really wanted to keep fine main missions in mind. We wanted to attract out-of-town visitors and engage local citizens. We do have a lot going on around the Fourth of July weekend, but nothing has really brought it together in a way that visitors can see that the Fourth of July weekend is really where they need to be, all around Central Illinois, up north, down south, the Midwest area. We want to create a unique experience that ties together all the things we have going on throughout the weekend, and that also highlights our city and our history. We're going to focus on family-friendly themes moving forward and establish local economic impact, but really, at the end of the day, we want this to be self-sustaining. We want to be able to rebuild so that we can continue to put this on and make it bigger and better, and we don't come in front of you year over year, and we plan to make this self-sustainable. This next slide really highlights what we looked at whenever we were doing our planning and what falls under each of those five areas for you. But I do want to note number five specifically. We want a creation of a fund for multi-year growth, which means that any proceeds or profit that we get from this event will go into that fund, 85% of it will. We already have this fund created, but like Emily said, due to COVID and a rained-out year, it is sitting at not a lot of funds right now, so we can't really get it off the ground without some help. The other part, 15%, will be a small percentage that will be used for community J.C.s initiatives, the many that we already run, but we also have a lot of members who would like to be more active within our Springfield committee, or community, I apologize, and we would like to see those plans come to fruition. We'd like to have a stronger impact on the community, and we think that the Capitol City Celebration can help us do that and that we can drive a self-sustaining nature in the future. I'm going to turn it over to Emily to discuss the details.
All righty, so everybody here, I'm sure, is pretty familiar with the traditional downtown festival layout. We're of course going to have all of those usual staples, like a giant kids' area, inflatables, face painting, some wonderful vendors, food, drink, beers, whatever you want. But we also want to really capture the spirit of Springfield. We want to do that especially by focusing on the history. We really want to play into the History Comes Alive programming that will already be existing and help get people out there to really learn about Lincoln and learn about the wonderful history that our city holds. But we also want to celebrate what's going on today, so we want to have both a kids' and dog patriotic pageant, and then allow those winners to be the grand marshal of our Fourth of July parade, which we are the capital of the state, and we need a Fourth of July parade. Following that, we will convene on the North Mansion Block for a movie in the park just to bring all the families together. And then on Sunday, we will start everybody off with an all-faith service to start your day on a good note, and then maybe not so healthy of a note, we do want to hold a horseshoe competition, both the food and the game. We'll also have some other just recreational sports out there. We already have these shenanigans lined up to bring in some wonderful music that evening and convene the weekend with a wonderful fireworks show downtown in front of the state capital. And I know that sounds like a lot, so next I want to bring up Patrick to talk a little bit about what our financial outlook looks like.
So the detailed financial budget was provided with the grant application, but just to do a quick overview, for total revenue, we are looking at $77,500. $40,000 of that would come from this grant, additional $25,000 from business sponsorships, $10,000 from food and drink sales from that weekend, and then another $2,500 from vendor fees from that weekend. In addition to that, we are looking at about $30,000 worth of in-kind contributions, and then a total of $59,000 in expenses. From that $59,000, $16,000 would be spent on fireworks, $15,000 would be spent on entertainment, $15,000 spent on marketing, and then additional $13,000 on the logistical side. So overall, we're looking at about an $18,500 profit, and as mentioned before, 85% of that would get set aside so that we could have this in future years, and the other 15% would be put back into the J.C.s so we can continue our community initiatives.
So why us? Why this event? We are hoping to bring some unique differentiators to the table to capture the heart of Springfield in a family-friendly environment. We have a history of success running this celebration, and we have the people on our side who have been prior J.C.s to help us build this back up, but right now, we just need a little bit of a nest egg to get it started. We want to use this for local community development, so some of these funds will go back into the community. We are working diligently to try to find new things and to also make a larger impact. But last but not least, of course, we want to have that local economic impact. We want people to see the best that Springfield has to offer, to bring in the visitors so they come back again, and we can make this more of a destination city. Other than that, I'll open it up for Q and A, but I want to thank you all for letting us present today.
Thank you.
This new? Okay, Alderman Donilon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just, first of all, I want to thank you for such a thorough presentation, the explanation. It was great. I can see you're excited about it. I'm excited about it. You know, one of the questions I had, I think you might address, but the intent, we ask every group that comes before us with projects that is going to be put heads in beds, is the intent to come back again and ask for $40,000 next year?
Absolutely not.
That's what I thought the answer was, but thank you.
The idea is a self-sustaining framework within three to five years, really depending on weather for that three to five, but definitely not coming back for $40,000 next year. That is not our plan.
Thank you. All the best.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Redpath, and then Alderwoman Connolly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's the difference between this and Lincoln Fest?
They don't know Lincoln Fest.
Yeah, I know what that is.
Lincoln Fest was the deal. Uh-uh.
I think the reason I asked you that question is because we got into a situation with Lincoln Fest that we couldn't afford it, because basically it was, the city services alone were enormous, and if you guys factored in the cost of police, fire, and public works into that, where is that in this budget?
Sorry, I have chaired this event about four or five times at this point. A majority of our police and fire are considered within the logistical aspect of it. We have not run the event to this size since 2016, and we have had a huge turnover within our chapter at that time. So the majority of our police, fire, and city services are included in that logistical aspect. We also are looking to specifically find groups to partner with, which will provide additional security, because we know that the, there is a police shortage right now in this town, and we don't want to overwork them any more than they already are, so we are looking at other aspects. In the past, we've actually had volunteer security, which it's a little bit stressful to stop people from riding their bike into the blast zone of fireworks, so we are going professional on that route, but the city costs are factored in there and are a large chunk of that logistic.
Okay, good, I hope it works. You know, that's, this is something that we need in the city, especially downtown, right now, so we're cheering you on, we just hope it works.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Alderwoman.
Thank you, Chair, and I just want to clarify, it was one thing that you brought up when we talked about what your, your hope, your plans were for this, this event, and you did mention that the goal of this is to not compete with existing celebrations like Rock the Dock, so I just want to make sure you had a chance to say something about that.
Yeah, absolutely, I think my nerves got the best of me and I skipped right on over it, didn't I? All right, so, just so you know, so we already partner with Levitt to provide fireworks. We have a sponsor for that as well, so we are looking at this more like a weekend than just Saturday and Sunday celebration, because we want to draw visitors. So if we market this as Thursday through Sunday, every single night, there's going to be fireworks in the city of Springfield, and we cross-promote the events that are already happening alongside putting in hotels, coupons, discounts, a guide of what's happening in the city over the weekend, so that visitors can be attracted to our local economy, I think it will be a very, very strong indicator of success, and we have a very healthy marketing budget to help supplement that as well, so that we're getting out beyond just our locals.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that, it looks like a great long weekend.
Yes, absolutely.
Alderman Heinauer.
Thank you. I, quite a few years ago, I sponsored a ordinance to provide a golf tournament that was starting up, I think it was $30,000 at the time. Why is Alderwoman said that that's not what economic, or I mean, the visitors bureau's for? I had no problem giving money for a few years, and I think that, you know, we, I ended up not, we refused to sponsor them after a while. I'm okay for doing this for a couple of years to get you guys going, and I'm okay for doing it for any, any, you know, any event to get them going, but I do think that these events need to turn, you know, they need to start to get off on their own feet, you know, once, once we, we help you out with seed money. So it's a good, it is a good event, you know, most of it's right around the Capitol, so it stays kind of contained, you know, and fireworks, when, when it's not raining are very good. You had, you have had some bad luck, but I think from the council's point of view, we need to look at it from, on, on every event that, that we, you know, we limit the, the amount of years that we, we provide funds to, to events, because I think that if, if they're successful, they should be able to, to stand on their own after a few years. And, you know, I would just ask Mr. Dahl if you could, this year, make, you know, really, really get us a report on these events and, and how many heads in beds they happen to, you know, if we see an uptick or whatever, because that, to, to us, that's what shows success.
Yeah.
You know, and it's not just that, it's Juneteenth, it's, it's, it's any event that we have, the car, the car thing downtown with, you know, all that, so good luck with it, and, you know, we'll hope that we can have the fireworks without rain.
Absolutely, you want the KRS or the OKRs, right? So yes, we will be looking at that as well for our KPS.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, so I recognize myself, so the figure $40,000, you guys have $40,000 that you're matching it with in addition to your sponsorships, is that correct?
So with sponsorships?
Yeah. I think, no. I think Scott's gonna.
Oh, you got it? Okay.
Yeah, sure, sure, sure.
Yeah, so the number, the $40,000 number came from the ARPA dollars, we had a line out, I've been there for a destination event, so that's where the $40,000 came from. What made it appealing for the J.C.'s is that they were bringing to the table another $27.5, so they were having matching funds with it, which is really what the C.V. Advisory Board has really been trying to get to, is some kind of a, a matching scenario. And also, Alderman Heinauer as well, the C.V. Advisory Board considers multiple years and how long that we're funding events, because they want them to be self-sustainable, absolutely. So that's where the $40,000 came from, the J.C.'s brought the, the matching dollars in the revenue.
Okay, so matching dollars, not necessarily $40,000 to match?
Correct, $25,000, $27.5 is what's in their budget.
Okay, $27.5, and then, of course, there are sponsorships that they show.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
No more questions, anybody? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You have a motion and a second?
Yes, there's been motion and second, to move this on to debate, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chair? Yes. Just a, a, maybe a recommendation, what, what we have next is 12, 3, 15 ordinances from City WLP. Many of these ordinances are for supplies, annual ordinances, standard recurring ordinances, and unless a, a Alderman has a problem with any one of these ordinances, I was wondering if we should try to put these on an omnibus vote for consent?
I'll second that.
Yeah. Okay.
What number, Chair?
The numbers, 107 through 122, so we have to read these into the record, I believe, and then we can do a, a vote.
Mr. Chair, I would actually.
You could exclude one or two.
Through 121 would be. Want to talk about 122?
Excluding 120, to exclude from the omnibus vote, which number?
122.
122.
121 or 122?
122.
122. So there's a motion to, to consider ordinances 20, you know, fiscal year 20, or calendar year 2022, number 107 through 122, excluding 122. So make it simple through 121.
Just to 121 there.
Second.
Overthinking that.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Here we go. CWLP, 22, 2022, 107, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing the execution of contract UW 22-02-79 Water Meters with Midwest Water Meter Incorporated and United Systems and Software Incorporated in a total amount of $925,419.70 for the Water Division for the Office of Public Utilities. 2022, 108, an ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing the execution of contract number UW 22-02-80 Ductile Iron Pipe with McWayne Ductile in an amount not to exceed $1,642,372.72 for the Office of Public Utilities. 2022, 109, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing the execution of contract UW 22-02-81 Water Main Gate and Tapping Valves with Illinois Meter Incorporated for a one-year term in the amount not to exceed $515,328.50 for the Office of Public Utilities. 2022, 110, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing the execution of contract UW 22-02-82 Iron Fittings with Core and Main LP and Illinois Meter Incorporated in a amount, total amount not to exceed $501,472.50 for the Office of Public Utilities. 2022, 111, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW 22-02-83 Fire Hydrants with Illinois Meter Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $571,904 for the Office of Public Utilities. 2022, 112, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW 22-02-87 for four Ford Escapes for the CWLP Water Division with Landmark Ford Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $102,864 for the Office of Public Utilities. 2022, 113, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing the execution of contract UW 22-02-89 Residential Water Service Materials with Illinois Meter Incorporated and Midwest Meter Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $543,641.20 for the Water Division for the Office of Public Utilities. 2022, 114, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing the execution of contract UW 21-3-03-1 Trenchless Water Main Installation Services with Petersburg Plumbing and Excavating LLC and J.K. Snyder Company Incorporated for a total amount not to exceed $339,025 for the Office of Public Utilities. 2022, 115, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 23-03-02 Mini Skid Steer with Vermeer Sales and Service of Central Illinois Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $67,049 for the Office of Public Utilities. 2022, 116, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of support maintenance for VMware Site Recovery Manager software VMware VS Sphere for a one-year term with Zones Incorporated from state contract in an amount not to exceed $51,571.4 for the Office of Public Utilities. 2022, 117, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of the annual software maintenance support for the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition Energy Management System with Open Systems International Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $62,385. 2022, 118, an ordinance authorizing a payment to Itron Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $65,797.12 for the services in relation to meter reading data for the Office of Public Utilities. 2022, 119, an ordinance authorizing a purchase of tandem duck truck for Rush Truck Centers of Illinois Incorporated from a state contract in an amount not to exceed $140,916.66 for the Office of Public Utilities. 2022, 120, an ordinance authorizing a three-year agreement with Sentinel Technologies Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $157,750.6 for the high availability network support for the Office of Public Utilities and the Police Department. 2022, 121, an ordinance authorizing supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1 million from the city's corporate ARPA funds to the Water ARPA Fund and to authorize and accept proposal number UW 22-030 with Petersburg Plumbing and Excavating LLC for water service line hot hole project FY 23 and 24 in an amount not to exceed $1 million for the Office of Public Utilities.
Okay, and we already moved and seconded on these, correct?
Yes.
And we voted, I think.
You moved and seconded for omnibus vote, now you're looking for a, a vote for passage?
Yeah, for passage, final passage.
Second, for the consent.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
This to the consent agenda. 2022, 122, an ordinance suspending the inter-fund transfer from the Water Fund to the Corporate Fund for fiscal year 2023. Motion for discussion?
Second.
If someone could just explain what the, what's going on here, I think I understand, but just for clarification and want to understand the impact of, of it, long-term to the Corporate Fund, and is this a one, is this a one-time?
Yes.
If you, if you recall, during the budget, Alderman Redpath introduced an ordinance basically to do a one-time thing for this fiscal year for the budgeting, so the budgeting was kind of taken care of, but by city code, we still have to pay it. So this is the, just basically a cleanup of ordinance to, for this specific year.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Chair, unless, I'd like to make a motion for consent.
Second.
I'll second that, excuse me.
Yeah, what's next?
Your, your chairman just left, so you're taking over.
Motion and a second for consent?
Madam Vice Chair.
Second for consent. Do I say all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Public Works, 2022, 123, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW 22-10-61 with F&amp;W Lawn Care and Landscape Company for installation of trees and planters in the downtown area in an amount not to exceed $640,564 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for debate.
Move to debate.
Second.
We have a motion for debate in a second. All those in favor say aye.
I just, oh, sorry. Called me off guard.
Alderman Heinauer.
Thank you. I've been on this council for almost seven years, I guess now, this is the most money we spent in all, all seven years together, and it's in Fund 95. I'm, I'm a little concerned about that, I'm all for, you know, beautifying the city, but, you know, Fund 9, is there any other funds that we can take it out of, is there, you know, do we have besides Fund 95? Hot seat, Nate?
Yeah, well, it, it's really, your pleasure, but it could be ARPA funds or, or corporate funds, obviously can't be motor fuel tax funds, or a couple of other options, and, and we are planting 144 trees, installing 145 planters, and planting 142 ornamental grass as part of this project, trying to beautify the downtown area.
Any other question? Well, I'm sorry, are you done, Alderman Heinauer?
Yes, yes, thank you, Chair.
Okay, Alderwoman Connolly?
Thank you, co-chair. Nate, just a question, so these are restricted just to downtown, are these going to replace those trees that had to be taken out? It's more than a couple of years, but.
Yeah, that's correct, there, there are trees that have already been removed, there are 63 that still need to be removed, that have met the end of their useful life or dying or just too big for, for the area, and then, like I say, planting 144 new trees as well. We'll be removing some of the concrete areas we filled in as well as part of this project.
That was my next question, so, but these, do we have kind of a geographic area, I mean, when you say downtown, what's the?
Yeah, Second Street, Jefferson, Ninth to Jackson.
Okay, so kind of a bigger area then?
Correct. We're not removing all the trees, there are still, still quite a few trees that are in still good shape that will, that will remain in place.
And then we're putting, we're putting additional trees in?
Correct.
In place. And then the ornamental planters, are those just the ones that are already in place?
No, so what we're going to do is we're actually going to relocate the older planters a little bit further on the outskirts, but we'll still have those planted to, to have still some beautification, and then we're installing new planters, either 48-inch planters or I think 72-by-30-inch planters. We're trying to group them to make more of an effect at the intersections as well, and that it's also easier, easier for us for maintenance purposes. And then we're, the, the ornamental grass we're planting is the Carl Forrester grass, which looks pretty sharp as well.
And then are these, are the, and I'm sorry, I just looked at it quickly, but it, these are the cement planters that are being put in?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Alderman Redpath.
Director, what, what is the, what is this in comparison to our overall tree, tree planting program throughout the city?
Yeah, well, this is, this is separate from, from our, that program, which we're looking at planting trees in, in the fall of this year, which I believe we were looking at trying to plant, we were, our goal was to plant 500 trees, however, the costs have gone up a little bit for trees.
And how many are we planting here?
We're planting 144 trees.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Alderman Connolly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, you said 144 planters throughout the downtown area, what, I mean, I'm sure you've got a plan for maintenance, that's always been an issue in the past.
Yeah, we, we have a beautification crew that we now have dedicated for those types of items, as well as we're planning on utilizing summer help to, to help us out as well.
So there's a plan, there's going to be a plan in place and, and it will be taken care of, thank you.
Okay, so we have a properly mo, a motion that was seconded, I believe, I stepped in, so all those in favor? So all those in favor to send this on to debate signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. One aye, okay. Mr. Clerk.
Noted. Twenty twenty-two, one-twenty-four, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW twenty-two dash zero-two dash eight-five with P.H. Broughton and Sons Incorporated to furnish construction on the FY twenty-twenty-three by two minutes overlay program for an amount not to exceed seven million, two hundred and one thousand, four hundred and eight dollars for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for consent. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one-twenty-five, an ordinance accepting low bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW twenty-three dash zero-three dash zero-five with Lincolnland Concrete Incorporated and Capital Ready Mix Incorporated to purchase ready mix concrete and related materials for an amount not to exceed three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the Office of Public Works and the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded for consent, hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one-twenty-six, an ordinance accepting the lowest bid and authorizing execution of a contract number PW twenty-two dash zero-two dash eight-three with Wascon Company for the FY twenty-twenty-three sidewalk program in an amount not to exceed nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded to send this to consent. All those in favor.
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, this is, uh, just, uh, you can ask for discussion, so I'd just like to make a discussion item on this one. This is our sidewalk program, and I just ask Public Works, if we've changed at all our sidewalk pro, program for any ward that was discussed at our January meetings with each alderman or alderwoman, could you know, let us know, uh, Public Works Director, if we've defiated from what we, um, had worked out in, in January and February? Thank you.
Okay. Okay, if there's no more discussion, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty-two, one-twenty-seven, an ordinance renaming the portion of Lola Bell Lane to Sloan Drive for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded, any discussion, hearing none? All those signify by saying aye.
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 Twenty twenty-two, one-twenty-eight, an ordinance regarding the variance request of section one-five-three point one-five-seven L pertaining to the restriction of access in Ambrose at Panther Creek for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Could I be added as a sponsor on this, please?
Absolutely.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one-twenty-nine, an ordinance authorizing execution of a stipulated agreement with the Illinois Commerce Commission, Norfolk Southern Railroad Company, Illinois Midland Railroad and the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that provides grade crossing protection funds for preliminary engineering and land acquisition for the usable segment via North Grand Overpass of the Springfield Rail Improvements Project for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Present.
Okay.
Noted.
Properly moved and seconded to send this to consent, any discussion? Alderwoman.
Yeah, thank you. I just, real quickly, if we could, um, I, I don't quite understand. I know we're going to be reimbursed, it says, by ICC. Do we have kind of a estimate of what this cost will be? Or does this just no cost to us and we're just?
Yeah, the, we are being reimbursed one hundred percent for, for the preliminary engineering and land acquisition up to the two-point-nine-four million.
Do we, do we know how much that is or is it just, don't worry about it?
Well, yeah, the, the preliminary engineering, that should be, that should cover everything for the preliminary engineering. However, as we get into land acquisition along the entire south side of, of that area, I, I don't have the estimate on me, but I can, I can check on it. And we, and then we've probably tried to re-utilize other railroad funds in order to cover the rest of the land acquisition or be maybe our matched or a future federal grant.
Okay, and then all the land acquisition comes back before council?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one-thirty, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract with Lewis Escavating and Snow Removal LLC to provide supplemental snow removal services in the amount not to exceed eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and one dollars for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded to send this to consent, any discussion?
Just, uh, Mr. Chair, um, all, um, Director, bottom, this is, uh, the, the, the expenses we incurred with the twelve-inch snowfall, is that what this is all about? This one and the next ordinance?
That's correct. It's for the twelve-inch snowfall that we had, and we utilized contractors, I believe, on February second, third, and fourth for that event. And then we had the five point, lower, five inches, five-point-two inches, I believe, on February the seventeenth, and we utilized contractors the next day on February the eighteenth.
And they did an outstanding job, so we appreciate them.
They definitely did a great job supplementing our crews, and our crews did an outstanding job as well.
Thank you, Director.
Nate, don't go away.
Any more discussion?
Yes, sir. Nate, the, and yes, they did a great job. Is there a certain number that people can contact? I have had some calls regarding, um, uh, yards that they might have cut a little close and, and, you know, one, I had one person where a sprinkler head got chopped off and things like that. Is there, is there, do they just call Public Works or is there a certain?
Just go ahead and call Public Works, and we'll check it out and verify if it was either the contractors or our crews working in that area.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one-thirty-one, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract with P.H. Broughton and Sons Incorporated to provide supplemental snow removal services in the amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded to send this to consent, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one-thirty-two, an ordinance approving the plan for the large-scale development of Carisota's YMC Soccer for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded to send this to consent, any discussion?
Could you add me as a sponsor on that, please?
Will do.
Hearing no more discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty-two, one-thirty-three, an ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the payment to the State of Illinois Department of Transportation in the amount of one hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars for Fifth Street resurfacing between Ash Street to Brenn Meyer Boulevard, MFT Section Number twenty-two dash state dash zero-zero dash RS for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Present.
Right, properly, I mean, been moved and seconded after sending this to consent with one present.
Noted.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one-thirty-four, a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation of Motor Fuel Tax Funds in the amount of one hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars may be used for Fifth Street resurfacing between Ash Street to Brenn Meyer Boulevard, MFT Section Number twenty-two dash state dash zero-zero dash RS for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Present.
Properly moved and seconded to send this to consent with one present.
Noted.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Could I ask for an omnibus vote on twenty twenty-two, one-thirty-five to one-forty, please?
Second.
Okay. Properly moved and seconded, uh, do this all together from one, two, two, to twenty twenty-two, one-thirty-five.
One-forty.
The twenty-two.
One-forty.
One-forty. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
General City Business, twenty-two dash, twenty, twenty twenty-two dash one-thirty-five, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of one hundred G E T A C S four-one-zero G four laptop computers and one hundred laptop computer batteries in the amount of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars from the PCN Strategies Incorporated for the Springfield Police Department. Twenty twenty-two, one-thirty-six, an ordinance authorizing execution of a two-year service agreement with AT&amp;T for Complete Link two-point-zero mark for radio circuits of various transmitters in the amount not to exceed ninety-six thousand dollars for the Springfield Police Department. Twenty twenty-two, one-thirty-seven, an ordinance authorizing supplemental appropriation of unused funds from the FY twenty-two to FY twenty-three to purchase of three twenty twenty-two Ford Police Interceptors Utility Gasoline Vehicles in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand dollars and twenty, one hundred and forty, twenty-five dollars for the Springfield Police Department. Twenty twenty-two, one-thirty-eight, an ordinance authorizing supplemental appropriation of unused funds from FY twenty-two to FY twenty-three to purchase of seven twenty twenty-two Ford Police Interceptors Utility Gas Vehicles in the amount of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars for the Springfield Police Department. Twenty twenty-two, one-thirty-nine, an ordinance authorizing a payment to Motorola Solutions Incorporated for monthly Starcom Radio Services used by the Springfield Police Department and Homeland Security in amount not to exceed one hundred and three thousand, two hundred dollars under state master contract CMS three-six-one-eight-eight-five-zero for the Office of Homeland Security Bureau of Emergency Communications. Twenty twenty-two, one-forty, an ordinance authorizing a payment to Verizon Wireless and Monthly Data Services for MDC and Video Units in the amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred dollars under state master contract CMS seven-nine-three-three-seven-two-P for the Home, Office of Homeland Security Bureau of Emergency Communications.
Move for consent.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded to send these all to consent, um, any discussion on it? Alderman, for what purpose do you wish to be recognized?
Well, I, I requested to speak.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, and I don't know, Chief, if you can answer this question, this is real quick. It's been a while since we've been trying to get these, these, um, police cars, uh, vehicles. Do you know the timeline for these to be delivered?
I do not. I know that, uh, majority of them are currently on the lot at, uh, in Greenfield, in my brother's Ford. From that point, we have to outfit them, and I'm not sure of the timeline on that.
But we actually have a physical signing that they've been seen.
Allegedly.
Oh, spoken like a real.
We needed all forty of them about, well, a long time ago, so. We, we called them with regularity to, to speed up the process.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one-forty-one, an ordinance authorizing a settlement of workman's compensation claim for Michael Griffin in the Office of Public Works employee for case number twenty-one dash WC dash zero-one-nine-zero-five-nine.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded to send this on to consent, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one-forty-two, an ordinance approving the appointment of Rabbi Lynn Goldstein to the Board of Managers of Oak Ridge Cemetery.
Move to debate.
Or move to debate. Sorry, move to debate.
Okay, been moved and seconded to send this to debate, any discussion? Or does she want to come up and make a statement? Hello.
Hi.
Hello, Rabbi.
Um, I'm Rabbi Lynn Goldstein. I'm the new, well, not new yet, well, I guess I'm eight or nine months new, um, here in Springfield and working, um, at the congregation. And I have been asked to, um, talk to you, real short, um, to talk to you about, uh, what I would do. And I have been asked to work on the Board of Managers for Oak Ridge. And so I guess that's probably all you want to hear at this point.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And your patience.
Okay.
Thank you, Rabbi.
Any more discussion, anything? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-two, one-forty-three, an ordinance authorizing a decrease in the number of Class D liquor licenses by one due to sale of per businesses by Sanderfield Incorporated doing business as Old Luxembourg Inn located in nineteen-hundred South Fifteenth Street.
Move for consent.
Been properly moved and seconded to send this to consent, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one-forty-four, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses by Buchek Incorporated doing business as Old Luxembourg Inn located at nineteen-hundred South Fifteenth Street.
For consent.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded to send this to consent, any discussion? Hearing none? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one-forty-five, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class F liquor licenses by one and increase the number of subclass two liquor licenses by one for Reb Corp LLC doing business as CLEAK located at, at four-eleven East Washington Street.
Move for consent.
Second. Been properly moved and seconded to send this to consent.
I, I didn't, I don't think you heard me, I said debate. Debate, Mr. Chair.
Uh, debate, okay. To move this to debate, I'm sorry. Any more discussion?
Do you have a second on the debate?
Second on debate.
Second.
Thank you.
Been properly moved and seconded to send it to debate, uh, all in favor signify by saying.
I, I got it. It's a new system, we got to sign up to speak, so I'd like to sign up to speak.
If I don't see it in there, I'm gonna move.
Yeah, sorry about.
Even then.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, um, this has to do with, um, CLEAK, which I think is a, a well-run tavern from what I can observe. I've been working downtown for forty-three years now, and I, I've worn out probably twenty pairs of shoes just being downtown and checking everything out. And, um, we've seen a big transition down. By the way, this isn't worded this way, but this, currently CLEAK has a, a one AM license they have in their own right. And what CLEAK would like to do is basically inherit or they purchased the rights to the three AM license which Station House had, but Station House, um, no longer exists because we're tearing down the building, among other reasons. They had a fire there before that. So, um, CLEAK wants to go to a three AM, and my concern is that for downtown, we've, we've gone from, you know, real business-oriented, commercial downtown with offices and state offices and so forth, and now we're trying to repopulate downtown with residential, um, uh, living and trying to, you know, recon, convert what had been offices to residences. So my concern, to summarize it, my concern is that I'm worried about three AMs, and we've, we've had problems with three AMs. My concern is that if we, basically this is adding what would be a dead three AM, if you understand my, uh, uh, we're, we're keeping a three AM alive here, which could kind of just go away. And I think the way, one AM is, is fine and, and very good, but the three AM, I'm worried about, uh, this would be a three AM for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday nights. And I'm worried about if we, trying to repopulate downtown, um, the, the noise impact of, um, you know, cars starting up, car doors closing. This particular, CLEAK does have an outside area on the street and taking up two parking spaces, and so there's outside activity. This particular location is directly across the street from, uh, the Myers Building, which is a ten-story Myers Building. It's all office right now. There's, um, a contract, uh, in Bean to, um, convert the Myers Building to residential, a hundred units. And so this is directly across the street from the Myers Building. We won't know whether that contract goes through until October. So basically, we would have folks, you know, trying to sleep at, potentially, down the road, folks trying to sleep at the, um, Myers Building that have to get up the next morning to work. And I'm just concerned about the impact of a three AM on that type of situation. And the other residences nearby, we've got the, also, we've got the St. Nick's, the former St. Nick's Hotel that's nearby, it's got about ten stories to it with residential, residential people. The folks that would be at the, um, at the, uh, CLEAK would be using a parking lot, which is, you know, right behind the St. Nick's. And I understand the Alamo is currently a three AM.
Yeah.
And so we've already got potentially on certain nights, issues with, um, the Alamo. Typically, they don't go to three AM most nights. I think it's more like, you know, on the weekends. But I wouldn't want to add to what's already there. It's hard to take away a three AM. It's easier to prevent another three AM to come in. So that's a long explanation for the, putting it on debate, and I could say more. Um, I know we've got individuals here, and you just won an award at Downtown Springfield, Inc., because you're doing some good things, and I understand that. And I, I just hope you can continue doing good things, but with a one AM instead of a three AM. So that's my point of view on it.
Alderman Gregory.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that.[1763.37]
Yeah, I would agree with that, and my only concern is, you know, it's fairness to other bars. We got other bars and other establishments that are gonna hop to go three o'clock, and, you know, I know in the past, we shied away from that, so that would be my concern with this particular situation.
Okay. Alderwoman DeSenzio.
Yes. Well, first, I want to see what the home alderwoman thinks of this liquor license, since this is in your ward, and you will have to field the complaints for the most part. But second, is CLEAK considered an alternative bar? Okay, so you are, is there, are there any?
Come on up.
Come on up. And I can just ask this while you're on the way up. Are you pretty much the only gay bar in town? Okay, all right.
Providing a safe space between one and three AM for that community is the goal, just as Station House did for many years prior without any issues.
And that's why I'm fully in support. Thank you, alderwoman, and thank you. I like to dance, so there aren't many places to dance from one to three AM in the city, and I appreciate, I see Ryan Bandy back there. He's seen me in action. So, thank you.
Now you did it, Kristen.
When I used to be able to stay up that late. Let's clarify.
You don't owe me, I was in Station House for ten years, and with respect, Alderman, I think I ran a pretty good business too, and we, the funny thing is, back in twenty-sixteen, we were having this issue with the three AMs. My bar had the most police calls to it. Well, most of it, some were with the apartments upstairs. One was a drag race of people, I don't think it was my drag queens running around, I think it was probably, but they put my, they put my address and stuff. So, there's this whole idea, which I would call a myth, that these three AMs are causing all these problems. There's been a lot of people that have been in the business for a long time, and Justin Rebbe was with me when I reopened Station House. And now, I'm so proud of him and Josh, who I've known for fifteen years, that they have taken upon themselves to open a business in the middle of a pandemic and start this business, and not only do that, but just succeed. So, you know, I went through a lot with my fire and everything, and what I'm trying to do is to help these guys carry on the legacy of Station House. Station House would still be open right now had it not been for a fire, okay? I went through two years fighting with insurance, trying to get this all resolved, and then give the city a great deal on the buildings so that we could all move forward, so I could move on with my business and Ralph's war. But this whole idea that we need to get rid of a three AM license because of a bar burned down, when these two have proved themselves over a year, I just think is unacceptable. And I hope that we can continue the legacy of Station House with these two. They proved themselves, they've gotten a great, they got a great award last week, and I'm so proud of them both. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Purchase.
That was it. I was gonna ask them to come up and speak, but they did, and I just wanted to let my colleagues know that I was in full support. They have been asking since I've been in this position, and I'm in, I'm in support with Kristen, that they, that's a safe space for everyone to be at, and I don't see an issue with it. So, I would ask for my colleagues to support when that time comes too. And thank you, Joe, for sharing your concern.
Yeah, you bet. Mr. Chair, can I?
Let me, let Alderwoman kindly, and then I'll come back to you soon.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations on your award. That's fabulous, and very much thank you for creating a space where, where people are welcome, where everyone's welcome. I know, Ryan, it's been a loss not having Station House, and I'm looking forward to voting for this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman.
Okay. Alderman.
Yeah, I think the city supports the CLEAK.
It's called CLEAK.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry.
Sorry about that. You know, so, you know, we got the parklet for the CLEAK, and I think that was, you know, a really good effort as we tried to survive the COVID environment. These parklets are surviving, though, and so that's one difference between the Station House. The Station House didn't have activity outside in front of the tavern, and that's the difference between, so, and so, so I think that's a difference between the one and the other. But I also think one difference is here, this council kind of had a consensus before you're on, on the council, Alderwoman Purchase, that we're gonna try to reduce or scale down the three AMs, and so this is an opportunity to do that. And the way, and I don't really agree with our city attorney on the way you can transfer a, an existing three AM that one location had and move it to another location. I just, I don't think that that's the way it should work. So, then I'm concerned that, okay, let's say the CLEAK doesn't want to be the CLEAK anymore, and you give it to somebody else, and let's say a little motorcycle-type bar. Now, we got a motorcycle bar in, in front of the, I know that's a stretch to some, but I'm just trying to think this through as a process. I think we want to repopulate downtown with residences, and I think the three AMs is a problem. That's just summarizing it in summary. Nothing against a CLEAK. I think it's, did I do it again?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. You know, growing up, I learned to say garage the British way, garage the American way, and garage the French way. But any rate, I won't say anything more. I'm done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll end it there. So, we have a motion on the floor to send this on to debate. If there's no more discussion, all those in favor signify by, well, okay.
I have one question.
Yes, Mr. Hanauer.
Okay, the parklet, are they allowed to use the parklets in, as long as the business is open, or do we have certain hours that they're allowed to use them? Because if it's a problem, just say they can't use them after one o'clock. I mean, that's, that's a very simple solution that we could bring next week and, and win that, that problem.
Thank you.
Just throwing that out there, so, thank you.
Okay. No more discussion.
Please, no.
Signify by saying aye.
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 Twenty twenty-two, one forty-six and twenty twenty-two, one forty-seven are requested to remain in committee.
Correct. There is a issue with, you may recall on the annexations, we have to do certain publication and notices, so we're outside the time for the publication, so we, if you wouldn't mind, we need to hold it in committee for two weeks.
Twenty twenty-two.
That would be one forty-six and one forty-seven.
Twenty twenty-two, one forty-eight, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of Healthy Homes Production Grant number ILLHHP-0054-22 for the amount of two million dollars from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for funding of a Healthy Homes program and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of two million dollars for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for consent. Second.
Properly moved in second to send this to consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one forty-nine, an ordinance authorizing execution of a subrecipient agreement number twenty-one-dash-SR-dash-007 with Heartland Continuum of Care and United Way of Central Illinois as a fiscal agent for the Springfield and Sangamon County Strategic Plan to address the homelessness utilizing the city's Community Development Block grant funds in an amount not to exceed forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move for consent.
Second.
Been moved in second to send this to consent. Any discussion?
Briefly, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This is for the strategic plan, I believe, and I was just wondering what the timeline is on the strategic plan. We've been working on it for some period of time, and I was just wondering if there's an update on that.
I actually spoke with Josh Sabo, and it is expected in the beginning of May, and at the end of May, it should be presented to you.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else?
Any more discussion?
Thank you.
Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one fifty, an ordinance authorizing execution of a grant agreement with Downtown Springfield Incorporated for an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars to provide services for March first, twenty twenty-two through February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Move for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this on to consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Twenty twenty-two, one fifty-one, an ordinance authorizing execution of a professional services contract with Mericon LLC to complete actuarial reports for the city's health benefit costs for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, and attestation for Part D subsidy for a total amount not to exceed fifty-five hundred dollars for the Office of Budget and Management.
Move for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this to consent. Any discussion?
Fifty-five hundred, is that, is that number correct? Because normally, we don't see something that low. The reason for that is, when we're having so many problems with our actuaries, we decided to put them all on, required to be on, you know, on the agenda. We amended our city code so that this is another category of ordinances that has to be reviewed by the city council.
Any more discussion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one fifty-two, an ordinance authorizing execution of agreement with Tanae Haley as the Lincoln Library Outreach Coordinator in an amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand dollars from March first, twenty twenty-two through February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three for Lincoln Library.
Move for consent.
Second.
Debate.
Move to debate.
Second.
Properly moved in second to send this to the debate agenda. Any discussion? You got your head?
I do have a question, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. And you did use the system.
I did, sir, yes, I'm trying. Thank you, Chair. I just, there was no real description of this. Do we have, okay. Just, I just want to, there was no real description of the ordinance. I was just wondering what was going on.
Absolutely. So, this is a IMLS grant, so the Illinois Museum and Library Systems Grant from, I actually wrote it under my last position, and it is specifically for, it's a grant written to reach the areas of town that are the lowest active library card users and active library card holders. So, not exclusively, but the way it's written is, we'll be looking in towards two, three, and four, and I've actually talked to alderfolks from those areas. Not exclusively, will be lots of other places, but the idea is to have Tana be at two to six is the way the grant is written, but my idea is that in two separate locations on each of those wards, they would have consistent pop-up hours. So, my hope is that it's a precursor to the bookmobile, so we'll be working with faith communities, the Park District, and organizations in the different wards to have consistent hours, and then we'll also have extra hand-on-deck to do more outreach, so things like the Earth Fair and farmers' markets, things like that.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah, it's wonderful. Excited about it.
Is this, oh, and I'm sorry, is this a grant that is renewable every year, or?
I don't think so. I do think it was under the COVID funds.
Okay.
So, we will be looking into what we can do next year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. No more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one fifty-four, an ordinance authorizing a sponsorship payment of twenty-five thousand dollars to One in a Million Incorporated for the Juneteenth event pursuant to Article seven, Chapter thirty-seven, Section thirty-seven-point-six-two, the nineteen-eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this to consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one fifty-five, an ordinance submitting Chapter one-seventy, Section seventeen-point-ten-point-twenty-one of the nineteen-eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amending pertaining to pool permits.
Move to consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this on to consent. Any discussion?
Real quick, just to, just so I can explain it, I, number one, I will not be here next week, so I apologize for that. We're probably out of town, but what this does is, we've had a problem in the past where pool companies have taken over ye, over a year to get a pool in. At one time, there was a pool company that had over twenty-five outstanding permits out there. Some of them had not gotten done in, is, in, in over six months, and I got, I started getting calls from neighbors and from people that actually were waiting on their pool to be done. I know for a fact that there were pools that were being dug the first week of December. That means that there, there's a hole in someone's backyard for, through the winter. Number one, I'm concerned about safety. It's not fair to the neighbors, and I, I think we just need to clean it up and make these, make these folks work a little bit faster. If they, if they can't do a pool within, you know, within the six-month time, they can ask for an extension. We've lowered that from, I think, ninety days to forty-five. I don't have it right here in front of me, but I'd just ask for your support on it.
Okay. Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Matt, or thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, a few years ago, I introduced an ordinance that allowed, that limited the time to one year, and the reason why is because of my ward in particular, we had an individual that was two years in the process of building the in-ground pool himself, and it just created all kinds of havoc in the neighborhood, let alone a safety issue for over two years. So, Alderman, I know you talked to me about this offline, but I intend on supporting this because I was appalled to hear that there were this type of activity going on throughout the city, and it is, it is a safety hazard for many, many reasons, and if we can get things sped up, so be it. Thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
I too run into the same situation with pool construction that, what they delay for quite a long time, and there was a pool in my area for over a year, and I, I hate to call it a scam, but I just think that what they're doing is taking these people's money upfront and then going to open it up, five or ten more permits, and, and just delay, delay, delay. I know planning and zoning's been dealing with one issue in my ward alone for well over, maybe eighteen months now. It's, it's ridiculous. I totally support this, but I, one thing I don't want to do is place the burden on the, on the homeowners. It should be put on, on the pool companies themselves, because what they're, what they have to do is the people have to, if I, if I, if I'm correct, they have to get the permit themselves, so they're gonna be the ones that are gonna have to pay the permit twice. So, we gotta find the bad actors in this thing, and the bad actors are the pool companies. So, I hope that's part of your ordinance. I haven't read it yet.
Like that, if you don't mind, I would like that. I, that is something I wanted to, I wanted to follow up on tomorrow, so I, I'm the same way. I don't want it to, to pass, I want it to go against the pool companies.
Okay. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. I didn't delete my request quickly enough. Alderman Redpath and Hanauer discovered my question.
Okay.
About who has to pay those additional fines.
The company or the pool, okay.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? If not, hearing no more discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one fifty-six, an ordinance authorizing the execution of agreement with Janet S. Williams to provide services as a program manager required by a grant from the Corporation for National and Community Service, Americorps, for the Youth Initiatives Program, Grant Number FCSAY-Y-06273, for an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand dollars from January first, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for consent. Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this on to consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one fifty-eight, an ordinance appointing Brian McFadden to the Springfield Economic and Community Development Commission.
Motion for debate. Second.
Been properly moved to send this on to debate. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Chris, I got a question.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thanks, Chair. I just want to clarify that these, that these upcoming appointments, one is a duplicate, one already serves on another board or commission. That's one sixty. But these are in relation to the Enos Park TIF. Is that correct?
Right.
So, these are, these are the people that we agreed to put on the Economic Development Commission for the Enos Park TIF. Is that correct?
Uh, Mayor.
I don't know if it's necessarily the names we agreed on.
No, it's, it's.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I just wanted to clarify that part.
Correct.
Mayor, you still want to go, or are you fine?
Yeah, the entities were allowed to, we expanded the board, I think, by an ordinance previously.
Yes.
That is correct. And so, the entities select.
So, we can reject the.
Name.
But, okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, that's, thank you, Mr. Chair. What you gonna call it?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Not that scary. No, I, I agree with you, Alderwoman, Alderwoman, DeSenzio, even though I, I don't agree with the expansion, but we had to do what we had to do to get those letters, I'm happy that our, our, our SHA tip, but I, I, you know, and, and my statements about these two gentlemen are not personal, this is more about policy and about having a different voice amount of people, these two gentlemen hold very powerful positions in other places, and, and, and if we could just get some citizens that, that are on those individual boards and commissions that, that really give us a different outlook on economic development, and, you know, I, I really speak, you know, for the east side of town and stuff, it's, it's, it's really, it's really good to have somebody who has some experience of being over there and stuff like that, not saying they don't, I'm just saying from what I've seen, it, it hasn't worked out in, in the places that they serve out now for us, so, thank you.
Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir. Twenty twenty-two, one fifty-nine, an ordinance appointing Terry Sherholtz to the Springfield Economic and Community Development Commission.
Move for debate.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send it on to debate. Any discussion? Hearing none? All vote in favor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one sixty, an ordinance appointing Leslie Schroed to the Springfield Economic and Community Development Commission.
Motion for debate, second.
Properly moved in second to send a debate. Any discussion? Hearing none, oh, go ahead.
This is the one that already serves on another Board of Commission.
Okay.
So, she'll have to choose which one she's going to serve on.
Okay, thank you for that, so, go ahead.
Is it proper protocol to vote for tonight, or do we wait?
It's on debate.
It's on debate.
Okay, thanks.
So, next week we'll have to deal with it for sure. Okay. There ain't no more discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one sixty-one, an ordinance appointing Joe Aleo to the Springfield Economic and Community Development Commission.
Motion for debate. Second. Sorry.
Moved in second to send this to debate. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one sixty-two, an ordinance amending Chapter ninety-one, Section ninety-one point zero-one to the nineteen-eighty-eight City Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to animal disturbance.
Move to consent.
Second. Thanks, Joe.
Been properly moved in second to send this to consent. Is there any debate? I mean, any discussion? Will do, Alderwoman DeSenzio went in, Alderman.
I'm just going to explain it.
Okay.
As of now, when a dog is barking, an animal control, excuse me?
Or a rooster.
Or a rooster, whatever, an animal. Any animal that is making noise for, right now, the time limit is fifteen minutes continuously, if they take a break, the clock starts over, so I'm reducing this to ten minutes. I know it's huge, but it does make a difference, and that's what this is.
Okay.
Thank you for that explanation, you can only bark for ten minutes instead of fifteen minutes.
Correct.
What the new rule is.
Yes. I mean, we could move it down to five if you want.
Oh, no.
Oh, see, oh, that's interesting, people like, no, five minutes is okay, it changes way too much, so ten is just right.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, one sixty-three, an ordinance submitting Chapter eighty, Section eighty point zero-eight ABC and Section eighty-two point zero-two A-one of the nineteen-eighty-eight City Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to pedestrians on roadways.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Debate, debate. Oh, debate, okay.
Absolutely.
Properly moved in second to send this on to the debate agenda. Any discussion?
Look at your screen.
Look your screen.
Okay, DeSenzio.
Thank you. I've had some phone calls about this, this, of course, is the panhandling ordinance. I just want to make sure that the ACLU is okay with this, that we are not infringing on anyone's right, you know, to, to make money by standing in a safe space, and I also want to make sure this applies to fundraisers, because there are fundraiser, and I saw in the news that this does apply to fundraisers, but we do often have people that stand in medians with a boot or something else to raise money for a cause, so this has to apply to them as well, has to be across the board.
Is, is anyone want to answer that, uh, Corporation Council?
Well, this is actually, really, safety ordinance, does not address content or speech in any manner. It is our belief that this meets the requirements under the applicable rules and laws, and I believe this will withstand any sort of a question or otherwise, or it really does not address, or, I'm sorry, does not, is not contra to what ACLU had provided to us originally. Their original communication was not fully complete, because I don't think they've had the same experience that we have had, unfortunately, with the issues relating to the panhandling and content, the issues of content and speech. This ordinance does not address that, this is a safety ordinance relating to pedestrians trying to basically potentially pull cars over or interaction with cars on medians and along the roadway. And ironically, this, the original ordinance that this replaces addresses the issues relating to attempting to hitchhike, so it eliminates all of those provisions, in other words, soliciting rides and so on, but addresses solely the safety concerns about interaction of pedestrians and automobiles who are actively operating on a, a right-of-way or roadway.
Thank you. Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Counselor, you addressed my first questions about the intent and that it specifically applies to any individual, they can't go walking around the streets and walking in the medians, and, you know, I've received a number of complaints, actually, I got one right, right before I came downtown from one of my neighbors about this particular ordinance, I guess they saw something about it, but, you know, it's, it's an issue that we've all gotten complaints, and not, maybe not all, but we've gotten complaints about, especially in these roadways where there's forty-five mile an hour traffic, let's say along, I work out on, off of Dirksen Parkway, there's individuals walking all the time in areas that, quite frankly, just aren't safe for, not, they aren't safe to be walking around, and this, I think, provides the department, the police department, that is, a more clarification on what they can enforce and not enforce, so thank you for bringing it forward, Mayor.
Okay, Alderman. Yeah, it was Gregory.
All right. For, for, for me, my, my only worry, I, I, I really think there is a place for us to, to keep people safe and keep people out in the middle of the street, I just, I'm, I'm so hesitant, I know our, our police department has discretion on that, I'm just really hesitant, I, I know I'm, I'm going to be not happy if, if, you know, a homeless person gets a ticket, you know, they can't pay it and stuff, you know, we, we're dealing with this situation with, with basketball, you know, and things like that, and, and it's just, I, I get the rule and stuff, and I get the discretion, but, you know, I just hope, and I, and I plead to our, our chief, and I know he's hearing me, that, that we will preach discretion, I, I, I don't want to see a bunch of tickets for our homeless people, they're going to be there, no matter what we put in place, they're going to be out there, they're going to push it, they're going to try to collect their money, because that, this is how they eat, this is how they get down, this is, this is what it is. So, I just, yes, it gives us the authority to move them along if they're, they're doing the thing, I just had a, a call with chief about a guy I used to work at a mental health hospital, and he was there with us, and it was a, a lock-and-key place, and, and he was there with us, and now, you know, it, it, it looks like he's just, you know, out on the street, just, no one cares, no, no, no mental health services or nothing. And it's a very sad situation, because he's a bright young man when, when he's on his medication, but, so those are the type of situations that we have on, out, out, out here on our streets, most of them, and, and that's just my spiel with it, I'm for it, I'm for safety, my heart goes out to the man that was killed, but I just really, really, really hope we use that discretion wisely and, and not be finding people, because I, I know me, I, and I know all the rest of us are not going to be happy with, with finding homeless people, so, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. And I agree, Sean, with what you said, I think that my, my concern, though, we have to look at it from the aspect of, we're liable if we don't do anything, and they're out on the, on the, on the median, doing whatever, and, and an accident or something, and they get, they get hurt, then, then the city's liable, and it's a, you know, we don't want that either. So, I, I, I applaud the mayor for, for bringing this forward, I think it's a good solution. Granted, it's not going to solve everything, but, but I think it, it helps, it helps the city with our liability issue on this, and I'm, I'm sure Alderman Donlin knows more than, than anyone about, about city liability and, and that, so, but I, I fully support it.
Thank you. Alderwoman Conley.
Chair, I just want to say, Alderman Gregory brings up a really valid point, and the reason people are panhandling on the streets is because we have good-hearted people in this community that, that do support and do give cash to them, so, I, I hope that along with this ordinance moving forward, that we also have more outreach and education to our community about other ways that you can more actively, more healthfully donate your, donate money, it doesn't have to be, you know, a huge donation, but donate to our organizations in town that do provide food, that do provide, you know, clothing and shelter and, and those additional wraparound supports, so this is an important thing to do, it, it is a very significant safety concern, but we need to also have the outreach that goes with it, because there are very good people in this community that, that want to give and want to help a fellow human being out, and so I think we need to counter this enforcement with some options for them, and more awareness of where they can give, so that would be my only request on this one, Mayor.
Thank you. Any unfinished business?
We have to vote on this one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm ready to go. All those, okay, so if there's no more discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, is there any unfinished business? Let's start with Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll be quick, this is one that I thought we actually finished, but it's back again. And I promised the resident who reached out to me, I bring this up tonight, he asked me specifically to do that, and Mr. Harris, you've been wonderful to help with this problem, but we passed an ordinance a few years ago that deals with not allowing shipping crates on residential property. And I have, I have one that we need to deal with, and just kind of, I just want to make sure everybody remembers that you're not allowed to have the shipping containers on, on residential property in the city anymore, it was allowed at one time, so if you have that kind of thing, please get in touch with Mr. Harris, and, Mr. Harris, I will do that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman, DeSenzio.
Thank you. I have some rocks up here in front of me, these are from Fourth Street, these are from the, the Rail Improvement Project, the rail might be being improved, but the, the streets definitely are not. People are getting flat tires, because, I mean, this is one small rock, they're everywhere, just take a drive down Fourth Street by where the work is being done, there are now indentations in the brick road from the heavy trucks that are hauling everything that they're hauling to improve the rail, I, I've said it before, I'll say it again, I know you've heard me say it, but this neighborhood has been stressed to the limit because of this project, so, flat tires, you know, I've, I've come to you with all kinds of things, but this is what residents are dealing with in their streets now. That's all.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. Real quick, just to, I wanted to bring something up that, that happened over the weekend. We just got done, some of our neighborhoods just got done with I-three broadband, and there were, they were boring in the neighborhoods, now we got AT&amp;T boring in the neighborhoods, they've got a subcontractor coming back, and the neighborhoods that just got the grass back to where they, it was normal. I don't know if there's something, I, I understand the FCC and all that, but why can we not ha, make the first group put a big conduit through so the other one can just pull, and they don't have to tear up people's yards and use the big machines and that. Along with that, I do want to, I do want to, there were some issues where, when they were horizontal boring, they went through a couple people's sewer line, causing backup of, of, of basements and thousands of dollars. Chris Warwick at AT&amp;T has been very good at, at following up with these folks, and they're, they'll, yeah, I'm sure they'll be taking care of that issue, but it just slays me that we, you know, what's next? What's the next company? And, you know, it's too late for some of, for like cobblestone and that, but on some of these other, others, why can't we force them to put conduit in and let others use that conduit? Because we, you know, we're going to have ten different fiber companies going through yards, you know, it, it's just not fair to, to people, and, and it just seems ridiculous, so, just wanted to let you guys know, that's what's coming, if you've had I-three, AT&amp;T's coming, you're going to get the same calls, and they're not happy. The second thing that I did want to bring up, and it's real quick, last week, I complimented the IT staff on, on rolling out our, our voting system, I failed to mention that, that the clerk's staff was heavily involved in this, and they should definitely have accolades for, for instituting it as well, and I apologize to them for not doing it last week, it was just kind of crazy week, and, so, thank you guys all, and, and please pass it on to your staff, Frank.
Thank you, Alderman.
Alderman Redpath.
Corporation Council, I got a situation in, in the industrial park that Matt McLaughlin's team and, uh, Mr. Harris's team and the fire safety people have been dealing with, we have, we have a business out there that's, that needs some legal attention. I tried to call you a couple times this week, and I know after reading all this agenda that you've been pretty darn busy, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not mad at you or anything, but the bottom line is, is that this is an auto repair business, and they destroyed the neighborhood pretty much, they've, they've been cited by our planning and zoning and housing units and fire safety, they're not going to comply, they're bad actors, and they, we need some serious attention to this, if you would please look into that.
Have they been referred to for zoning and so on, and spending?
They're ignoring most of the requests, and I know that, I know that we deal with this in different levels around the city, but this, these, these folks are real bad actors, and I'd appreciate it if you'd get involved in this.
Very good, yes, sir.
Thank you. Alderman McMinn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if Nate Bottoms is still here, but Nate Bottom is still here, but thanks for pushing I, um, Illinois Department of Transportation to improve MacArthur Boulevard, I see Bill Baskin is still here, thanks for speaking up about the atrocious conditions on State Route, MacArthur, I dot jurisdiction, and we, we did start the process today to repair some of that roadway, that's comment number one, and comment number two is, Alderman Williams, do you feel like you've been in a torture chamber tonight, having to deal with fifty-eight ordinances? Congratulations, you survived, and nice going.
Yeah, thank you.
Good job.
Got his readers all. Sometime, yeah. Alderwoman Conley.
Just to make sure you weren't completely done, there's me, and thank you, thank you, Chair, I, I have two, two items, and first, I guess, if Director Bottom left, Mr. Harris, if we could, I, I've gotten a, I got a complaint about yard waste collection, and that, and then was included in a loop with Republic that looks like they've already implemented the staggered collection for the, the week, so some parts of the south war region get picked up in the morning or early, early in the week, and some are later in the week, so, Mr. Harris, if we could, I, I know we were going to have information about that, could, could you explain how this is going to work for me, please? Are we going to, are we going to get a time, a timeframe for when people should expect to have their yard waste collected?
Yes, we'll provide a timeframe and also work with our, of course, with our community, community reach-out person, which is Mrs. Faber, to make sure the community is aware of it, and typically, I think you see on the city's website, we provide such all information in the past, we will do the same thing now in the future as well.
Thank you, I know, and I know you, we just got the, the map, the color-coded map of, you know, when your, when your zone is being collected, and, and I, I mean, I really appreciate that, I like bright colors and simple pictures, so if we could, I don't know, maybe have a little more detail to that, so people know where they are in the, that, those zones, and I know, and this was a great idea you guys brought forward, we're going to have yard, yard bags out less often, or for not as long of a time, just need to make sure we're giving.
We'll work with Julia, and like I said, mostly functions that we're actually doing, we make sure we advertise it within the city website.
Thank you, and I, I do try to refer people to that, thank you very much. And then the, the second thing I, I just wanted to mention is that we are having an open house tomorrow night at LRS to go over the Station Eight movement from, being moved from Monroe to really, Rickard and Lawrence, so that'll be tomorrow at LRS from five to seven, there will be a presentation that begins at five-thirty, and I believe our fire chief will be there to go over the presentation, they're going to have exhibits and just talk about the impact of that movement, the moving of that station on the community, so, thank you, Chair.
Appreciate that. Any more unfinished business? If not, we'll move. Appreciate that. Any more unfinished business? If not, we'll move on to new business. And I'm looking at my screen. No new business?
Oh, no, I got it. I'm trying to click it. The mayor went first.
Right. We'll have the mayor and then we'll have all the woman purchase.
Yeah, just to follow up on the announcements, tomorrow night also is a Community Unity Panel sponsored by the Jewish Federation NAACP from 6:00 to 7:30 at Southeast High School. And Chief Scarlett's going to participate in that, as well as Dan Wright, is my understanding, and Greg Harris, and possibly Kwame Raul with regards to the discharged officer. I don't know if there's anything you want to say, Chief, or Teresa Haley's here as well. But the other one is DSI Momentum on Main meeting tomorrow regarding startup businesses. Karen Khan's going to be speaking at Khan's Hospitality. That's at Bar None from 5:30 to 7:00. And Kayla Graven's here with DSI, if she'd like to add anything.
Thanks, Mayor. Let's speak real quick. I look forward to the opportunity to partake in this Community Unity Event. And Ms. Haley and I have had multiple conversations about this particular incident. And again, I just look forward to the community's input, ideas, suggestions. Ultimately, what we're, we're all about is moving forward and becoming better as, as an agency and becoming better as a city. So looking forward to the event.
And the LPRs, if you want to talk Monday?
Oh, sure. On Monday, we're having a public event. Essentially, it's an opportunity for the public to come view the license plate reader technology, which is in the process of being installed, something you all approved as part of our budget. So that's likely to go into effect very soon, as soon as the installation process is done. This event will be a short presentation at 5:30, followed by just onsite question and answer session. We'll have subject matter experts from Flock there to answer any technical questions. Y'all can, or the public can see the equipment, see what we have to offer, and check out transparency page and what that's going to look like.
At the library.
Carnegie Room at the library. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The mayor made my announcements.
Oh, he made your announcements?
Oh, sorry.
He needs a punch.
Any more new business?
Just a reminder that the city's closed Friday for Good Friday.
Happy Easter.
Find your egg.
Right. Jermaine Jones?
Hello? Good evening, City Council, Mayor, Corporate Counsel, City Clerk. Today, I've come to you all requesting, demanding to enact the enforcement of the statutes here in Sangamon County when it comes to protecting children, senior citizens and persons by right, by Constitution, international law, Declaration of Human Rights, the Bill of Rights, Illinois compiled statutes, the rights of persons. 420, 2016, my daughter was violated. 420, 2020, my daughter, Yesiah Nicole Bland Jones was violated for the second time. The person, the mother, was placed on 10 years probation of the Violent Registration Act. DCFS continues to drop the ball. Law enforcement refused, neglect, not to read the compiled statutes when it comes to protecting a person. I have an order of protection on my daughter's life. I already knew it was going to happen. It's just kind of like how it was like pre-planned, just knowing the nature of the person that I'm dealing with and knowing the nature of society. Not just that, just not that it's stigmatized or a stereotype. It's the nature, it's the hatred. We don't speak about child abuse. We speak about business. We don't speak about children's rights here. Our sons and our daughters, not minors, not juveniles, but y'all have them in a code that is completely abstract from the family code. You got to separate the minor, the juvenile, delinquent from the son and the daughter. Our sons and daughters have not committed no crime. There's no reason for no child to be taken from us and be given to us to have to visit for them for two hours once a week. My daughter was with me four days out of a week. Greater time than was spent with the mother. It was a mediation hearing. August 12, 2020, Judge Asher made a whole report. I filed a motion for ordinance of life on my daughter's life. I was in the court for, the case number is 2018-F212. This is the order of her life. You know, so you have other people that have their representation. Well, my daughter, I'm not, we're not from America. My daddy's, my dad's 107 years old. He's Cameroon, Mali, Nigerian, Bantu people. My mother's 78. I'm 49. My father didn't come over here on a field trip at 107 years old. 1935, you have him down at 11 years old in the first grade in Mississippi. 1925, rather. So this is the ordinance of life on him. There was statues that was admitted with this. It says, "Whereas," this was to the judge. The judge made stipulations in her order to have full protections of the daughter, of my daughter. The mother had no parenting time. DCFS, after the second conviction, after the 10 years plus the 18 month on the second conviction, DCFS somehow they found out that we was going to serve a warrant on the person who had custody of my daughter, which was the foster agent who took the custody of my daughter the day of the assault. You have, in your compiled statutes, you have six hours to, law enforcement have six hours to contact the parent, the next guardian. For some reason, the state's attorneys here, Chief of Police, Ken Skalati, Juan Hertha, Roy Williams, Sean Gregory, Senator.
Doris Turner.
Doris Turner. Nobody, DCFS, nobody will listen to a supremacy clause. Nobody will listen to the statute. So they turn around and give my daughter back to the violent person after they found that we was going to serve a warrant on the foster agent who had custody of my daughter. Now they getting, they have received money, funds, made laws where they making funds off of my daughter. That's not right.
Mr. Chair, point of order, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Jones, you've got a very sensitive issue here with your daughter. And you've been here before, and we're aware that of the turmoil you've been through with the state court system. But we, we've got to focus on city matters. And I know you asked for 10 minutes, so that's the reason I spoke.
Cities Matters, City Matters is 65 ILCS 5 slash 1 dash 1 dash 1.
Okay, so.
That's the Illinois compiled statutes of the municipality to enforce the laws of all ordinance when ordinance is violated.
So what I would like is just everybody address me so we don't personalize it. And what I want to say to you is that I think people up here have tried, and we really want to help. But where our disagreement comes, you're quoting a statute that you think says this body can give you back your daughter. Am I correct?
No, I'm quoting a statute where the municipality is supposed to intervene when the, when a person from the community brings these charges or these allegations to the community. If we take it to the community, it's going to be a posse comitatus. If we go, if we go to the community, it's going to be posse comitatus. That means we asking for the sheriff to act and enforce persons to act as persons to go serve a warrant and take my daughter from the violent mother who has, who's under the violent registration. It's like, do you return a rape woman to the rapist? Why do you, why do we continue to turn abused daughters and sons to the violent parent? It's like, it's got to be something like one parent, one rule.
But, so what I want you to understand is, we, this body had nothing to do with taking her, and we don't have anything to do with giving her back. And all I'm asking you is you, like, you, you've been here how many times?
With the same shirt on. Just so, just to remind you, I'm here again.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is.
If someone take your, if someone take your son or daughter and they have to respond to you, the law enforcement or DCFS got to contact you within six hours, right? That's one. 12 hours, that's two. 48 hours, that's three. For the mother, before it becomes child abduction, and for the blatant disregard when it comes against the agents, because it speaks about the agents and the agency of the state enforcement of the act, blatant disregard, you got seven days after the 48 hours. Then you have 15 days. So now, wait a second. Wait a second. Now you got 15 days. Then you have 30. And after 30 days, it's child abduction. It's been over two years and somebody have dropped the ball on the warrant to be served on the foster agent. Now she's back with the mother.
But not this body, is all I'm saying to you.
It happened on the property.
You're at the wrong place.
No, it's not. When it happened, when we, when we speaking about compiled statutes, we talking about the property.
We're going to have to agree to disagree. We're going to have to agree to disagree.
Have you read 65 ILCS 5 slash 1 dash 1 dash 2? Or 1 dash 5, 5 slash 1 dash 29?
I think we have to ask Mr. Jones to leave the podium. I'm sorry, but I think that's what we have to do.
So you not, so you telling me that no one is going to investigate the charges when a law, when a, when a referral is requested? And I have, I have two police reports?
Well, here's what we'll do. So Mayor, you can make the final statement and then we'll, we'll have to end this. Because we can't be, Mayor.
Yeah, we will.
As a prayer.
We'll check into the case and see what the status is on your daughter.
As a prayer, unto the, unto the law, unto the enforcement, by law. They supposed to enforce the law when a child has been taken and been abused and been returned to the other person. This is what we going through about DCFS. This is the reason why we have actions of Tenazia Barnes. You know, I don't want my daughter to die. I, I explained this to them years and years ago, and I'm still explaining this. And, I mean, y'all, y'all have a kidnapping law. It says it's not kidnapping when the parent go takes the child back.
We'll follow up with the DCFS or the state's attorney.
No, we want them. I want, I want Ken Skalati to intervene and do the job by law referral.
I don't think they have the authority, but we will check into it.
And we'll have to end it with that.
What about the UCCJAe, the JEA?
All, all I do is go by the advice of General Counsel. I'm not a lawyer, nor are you. So that's why I have to rely on a lawyer.
This is what happens to me every time I go up into the courtroom. Every time I'm peaceful, man. This is the same thing. I get this here. I don't have no weapons on me, bro. I come in here peaceful like everyone else. I don't have no weapons. It's children, it's, they're senior citizens. Why we need all of this, man? And I'm speaking about the, my daughter. Why do we need this?
We can't stay here all night. We have to move on. There's other people wanting to address the council.
You got body, man. This is body language. This is too much aggression, man. This is too much aggression.
Well, I mean, we don't mean to be aggressive, but we have to move on.
That's still body language. That's, what about public safety?
Teresa Haley?
Good evening.
It has been a long night, but I could not leave. I had to stay here and listen. I want to express my disappointment, first of all, in City Council. The city of Springfield continues to talk about unity and diversity in its council. As I look around this council, I was so excited to have three black people on City Council, three women on City Council. But tonight, my heart hurts. I was so disappointed with what happened with Calvin Pitts and South Town Construction for various reasons. There are three different programs that are being operated by three different strong black men here in Springfield. You have Billy Bishop's program, which is a partnership with O'Shea Builders. I am a member of Teamsters. I was recently appointed as the first black woman to head the Black Caucus for the Teamsters. I was excited about diversity and being a part of the union. And most people know that black people wouldn't be middle-class citizens without the union, because who else is going to hire us and give us the opportunity to move up within organizations? Welcome to America. That fight continues. Then you have the Lincolnland program, who the NAACP has referred numerous of black men and women to that program. I can honestly say that most did not succeed because they did not have the math skills. They did not have the background to complete the program. And those who completed the program, yes, they were hired in temporary jobs, jobs that lasted more, less than six months to a year. Then you have Calvin Pitts with South Town Construction, a brother who's been in business for over 20 years, doing the right thing on the east side of Springfield. We talk about South Town and what we're trying to do to grow this community in wards two and three. I don't see any growth. I see the City Council looking at three different black men from three different environments and pitting them against each other. Why come we can't have three black men doing the same type of work reaching out to our community? He's dealing with the homeless population. He's dealing with people who are returning citizens. How many of you are hiring them? How many of your companies are giving them the opportunity? The NAACP continues to fight for freedom and justice for all citizens. And what I saw here tonight was not it. And ladies and gentlemen, City Council members, I must say, I'm very, very disappointed. Because when you talk about women's suffrage and why you sit here in this horseshoe tonight, it was not representative of what we expect of our city leaders, our City Council people. With regards to change, I believe that the ordinance needs to be changed. How can we have three different people from three different walks of life serving our community? And what you all didn't realize and what Mr. Pitts didn't have an opportunity to say, and I don't think it needed to be said, there were eight to 10 young people here who have completed his program, who are currently working, when these other programs would not give them the opportunity. Did you ask those questions? No. When you all talked about him owing money for the pension, $4,000, a black man, you questioned that. But a white man owes over a million dollars, and you forgive that? There's some discrimination. There's some problems here.
We did not forgive that.
We did not forgive that.
You did not allow him the opportunity to either finalize what that agreement was going to be between him and the legal counsel, because they've been going back and forth for months. And the NAACP has also written that lawyer to find out what was going on. It's amazing that all of a sudden tonight, that letter appears for you all to take action and to bring it up, and not giving him the opportunity to say, okay, well, if you owe it, we're going to give you so many days to pay it. But we're talking about $400,000. We're talking about 20 black and white men, young people and older people who no one else wants to employ, to be given an opportunity. How do we, when you drive past the east side of Springfield, who do we see? White constructors, contractors, doing business in the city of Springfield, but black men are standing on the corner waiting for an opportunity. So someone wants to train them, but you don't want to give them $400,000? Think about $400,000 and 20 workers, the difference, the impact that that could make in our community. And you talk about creating a space for people to be hired in other programs? You're not creating a space for the east side? You're not creating a space for the black community? And then you talked about your commissioners tonight. You added four additional commissioners who are powerful people in this community. But you take a brother like Mr. Pitts and you deny him the opportunity to serve his community. I am truly, truly disappointed. And one of the other things that I want to say, and y'all can shake y'all's head, because I really don't care. I'm speaking truth to what I'm hearing in the text messages and what my community is saying to me. Tomorrow, we're having a unity summit, because we are sick and tired of being sick and tired. Our police officers are supposed to protect and serve, not hurt and harm. A police officer was on the force for over 18 years. Jewish Federation, black folks, people are concerned. People receive threats all the time, but we don't bring them to City Council. We handle them internally. So I was able to call a meeting, first time in history, and Chief can talk about that. So I was able to call a meeting, first time in history, and chief can talk about that, to bring the chief of police together, to bring the state's attorney together, to bring the attorney general together and the US District Attorney, because this is a serious matter here in Springfield. And I'm hoping while you're attending all of your other meetings tomorrow, that you decide to stop by the unity summit, because unity comes out of community and we expect more from our city council. Thank you.
Alderman.
Alderman McNamara was in first.
Yeah.
Well, oh.
Yeah. Ms. Haley, thank you for your comments and there were three votes not to table this tonight.
And I appreciate those three votes, but I'm looking at the rest of them who voted against it for various reasons. We will remember as well. And, thank you.
Thank you for sharing your views, because I think it was a shameful moment for this council tonight. I think Mr. Pitts has a strong reputation in our community and to throw that $4,000 item out there i- in the face of all the good that he was prepared to do, I think was a bad idea and I think we should have kept it on debate and let him come, Mr. Pitts come back and after he's resolved the $4,000 or whatever. Thank you, Ms. Haley.
Thank you. So meanwhile, black men and women don't have jobs this summer again, because of our wonderful city council. So thank you for what you don't do in Springfield.
Ms. Haley. Yeah, Ms. Haley, I'm sorry, I need to address some of that, because I think a fair amount of it was, at least in one way, addressed to me as one of the people who did vote to table that. First of all, that ordinance is not dead. And there was a question about, about back fees. I also voted against the Ferguson booth to, to, to recontinue that one. I'm consistent in that. So, and that needs to be addressed. I also have a concern about, you know, we just need to finalize some details here. What happens with houses that are owned by the city, that are rehabbed and, and then, and then, and we sell them? I'd like to see a little more detail around this. In my mind, no, I'm not done. In my mind, this is not a finished, a dead deal. This is not something that, that won't go forward. It was just, there are questions here that need to be addressed. I, I have a lot of respect for what Mr. Pitts wants to do and I think it's, I agree with you, it is critically important. But it's also critically important that we do things the right way. And that means having, having some clarity around these issues. I don't want to go forward with, with questions about this and where are things going? I mean, let's, let's be thoughtful and smart about this. It's not dead. It's, it's going to be on our agenda. If, if the questions are clarified by next week, then we can vote to take it off and put it on debate next week. So, so I, I think, I want to be careful that we don't characterize this as, as a proposal that will not, that cannot be see the light of day again. It's, it's, it's still in front of us and it will be in front of us until we get this clarified. And, and just real quickly to your second point, we've been planning, I've had people concerned about Station Eight for quite some time. And, you know, the mayor, I, I'd asked him to set, set up a meeting and, and he set it up for, for tomorrow, well before I knew about the unity meeting that you organized. That's a really important thing for us. Our, our community is reeling, the entire city is reeling from, from Officer Nichols. And, and I thank you for what you're doing. And I, I promise you, I absolutely will be going from LRS to southeast as quickly as I safely can tomorrow night. So, so please understand, there are other things going on here, but we do want to support. And, and, and while that might not be the way that you wanted it for tonight, and I understand that, we are reasonable people and we can, we can, we can get answers and, and a little more clarity around, around this, this construction proposal. And I think that would be, that would benefit all of us. So, so thank you for, for staying or coming back and just speaking to us. I, I hope you know that the double meetings was in no way, shape or form a slight to the unity meeting, because that one is extraordinarily important, too. I've just, was dealing in a little quiet way with something that's going on in my ward and, and it just ended up being a conflict. So I, I do thank you for coming and speaking to us. I hope you know that I, I personally respect you and the work that you do. And, and Mr. Pitts put on a really powerful presentation. I hope that we can come to a resolution around that one. And, and I, but it's not gone and, and it will still be in front of us. So we just need some clarification on that.
Thank you so much, Erin, and I look forward to seeing you tomorrow after you finish your other meeting. Our goal was to have this meeting before Passover. We did not want to go into the holiday weekend with this hanging over people's head.
Thank you for that.
We believe in being proactive instead of reactive.
Yes.
We wanted to give our community an opportunity to really soak it all in, ask their questions, do what they needed to do. But this is not about the NAACP or the Jewish Federation. This is about the city of Springfield and the unity that comes from community. So we're hoping that all of you come out. And thank you.
Absolutely.
And also for that second part, I expect our council and our mayor to be able to answer those questions. Those questions weren't for South Town to answer, because when you come and you say, hey, there's money available and we, we're looking for some people to take on these projects, it's up to the city council and the mayor's office to make sure that they have their ducks in order and to be able to answer those questions. It wasn't his responsibilities or your responsibility. So I appreciate your response once again.
And, and I will tell you, I mean, I, I wasn't part of that ordinance, so I didn't know the, the background behind it. I asked questions tonight to get clarification. That's, that's really how we do this with ordinances like this. So I do hope that we can get some clarity around that and, and thank you for, for understanding.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
I just want to say, you know, Calvin, I'm sorry, we, we couldn't get this done, man. Keep your head up, bro. We proud people, we ain't gonna walk out of here. I'm not going back to the east side hanging my head. We gonna come back and we gonna get this done. If it's still on the table, what, it take eight votes to get it out of the table? We fix what we fix, we bring it back. But I, I can tell you that we'll probably have to bring you back in another forum. It's probably not going to pass for you, bro. And it just is what it is, you know? But you keep your head up, you keep working, man. I'm gonna try to do all I can to keep doing what we need to do in our community and, and bring people together. And that's all we can do.
Mayor Vanefield.
I appreciate it. So first, the reason I didn't comment, I'm not part of the committee unless I'm recognized to speak, so appreciate that. But I will go through the questions that were asked, but let's not kid ourselves. I mean, the ordinances that are tabled are sent to death. I mean, you have to have eight votes to bring it out, so let's not kid ourselves. Usually, an ordinance for consideration is sent back and held.
That's right.
And then you only need six votes. So that's, that's, that's what it is. With regards to pre-apprentice program, I, you know, look at Calvin Pitts' record. I mean, all you have to do is Google Calvin Pitts on SJR's website and you'll see the articles. He worked with people that were let out of prison and it's about rebuilding the neighborhood. So someone asked, what's the difference between William Bishop's program and Lincolnlands? It's pretty simple and anybody can correct me if I misspeak, but we had a meeting with Billy Bishop, O'Shea Builders, Michael O'Shea, myself. We had Jermaine Ward there, who does construction, who's partnering with Calvin Pitts on this project. And that's what the unions asked for, is everybody to work together. And then Alderman Gregory and Alderman Williams were there. With regards to that, they basically had stated that with William Bishop, he identifies individuals and he makes the introduction to the unions. And then they work one-on-one with the individuals, trying to get them to the point of being able to be a journeyman or apprentice. Calvin's, at that point, they didn't, there's no interest in housing. I mean, there is no interest in redeveloping the housing. And so we have people up here all the time, icons up here almost weekly or every meeting, talking about dilapidated housing. So Daryl Harris has been identifying or prioritizing housing and can we save it before we have to tear it down? Because we are tearing down the fabric of our neighborhoods, our communities. We're tearing down neighborhoods. So we want to rebuild it. And I've said this many a time with regards to whole block restoration. If we own a house, what we intend to do is refurbish the house through a training program. Calvin Pitts, I'm sorry, Alderman Gregory, I disagree, he's the one to do it, he's been doing it. And he hires individuals from the neighborhood that don't want to go to Lincolnland, that want to, they want a, a career position. And this gives them that opportunity. Lincolnland's not cut out for everybody. I went to Lincolnland, but it's not for everybody. So he's helping individuals that need to go to work or they're underemployed and/or unemployed. And so with that, with the housing initiative, we'll refurbish the house, we'll assess the whole block. Any vacate, vacated properties, we're looking to do infill construction. And that's what that meeting was about. Is there interest in doing infill construction? Or can we maximize it by partnering or pairing the properties together or something of that nature? Then you see if there's homeowners within that block and give them the resources to fix up their property, if they don't have the financial capacity to do it. And so that's why it's important to extend the Pillsbury Tiff, which legislature, we thank the taxing bodies for providing those letters, because the Pillsbury area will benefit from a program like this. But I think Alderman McConnell, you rightfully asked, what happens when you sell the property? The property is held by the city, so it would go back into a fund that we'd use to do the next projects. So it recycles. And that's what we intend to do. Because just drive around, I don't care what neighborhood you, except probably out west or maybe some of the wards, you drive around the areas, there's a lot of housing all over the place that needs the help. But we, as a council, approved this program back with the COVID funds and that's why we brought it forward. And it was specifically in there. Bone Training, South Town Bone Training Center would do two to five houses with 20 individuals. At that time, we did what he was talking about, is doing 20 hours a week for 20 individuals. Or we can double it up and do 40 hours a week, paying them $15 an hour, just like they make out at Lincolnland, actually a little bit more, putting money in their pocket and, you know, teaching them a trade. So hopefully, we see a change in the unions with regards to diversification. There's some unions that excel in it, some unions don't. This gives us the opportunity to maximize that and move in that direction. But the other side of it is, we, I just went to the, I had the meeting with the Home Builders Association. They have individuals there, businesses, looking for people. They need, they need workers. And this would be a funnel for them to get workers. So it's all over the place. So when we talk about economic development, you can't get any better than constructing a house, because the end game is not only the teaching the individuals the craft, but in the end, it creates affordable housing. Just so we're all on the same page and nobody say, well, the mayor, you never said this. Housing is like a ladder. You have all the rungs of the ladder. The ones on the streets, the homeless on the streets, they're not even up to the first rung. Next rung, you have our overflow shelter. So for the first time, the city has provided year-round shelter services, low barrier. And then the next rung, of course, are the great agencies that provide supportive services, like Helping Hands, Contact Ministries, Inner City Mission, Salvation Army, the list goes on and on. Then you have the Habitat Humanity and the Housing Authority. The Housing Authority is the housing economic engine for this area to move people up that ladder. But they are at 99% capacity right now. But they have a homeownership program. So they have individuals that pay rent on a monthly basis. And these are premium individuals that we can identify, we've had discussions with Jackie Newman, identify those individuals that might want to move into a house. And so that's where you get the house, but the homeowner or the person to move into there, that's been the hard piece to figure out. So that's where we get the identified individuals to purchase the house or move into it. And then what you're doing is freeing up the capacity. So you move the people out of the Housing Authority, hopefully rent a space or own this space. And then it frees up the bottom where people can move up that housing ladder. So now you freed up space at Helping Hands or the other shelter agencies to the Housing Authority. And then they have capacity for people from our overflow shelter can move up into those agencies to provide that supportive service. So that's how that would, that cycle of housing would work. But it all starts with the demolition properties. How do we save them? Put them, refurbish them and move in this direction. And Calvin Pitts' program is the perfect fit. He's proven it on his own and the tiff between the unions and him, that needs to be settled in court. Because I'd like to see the documentation, you know, they say they have documentation. Anybody can cast aspersions. They need to come and spell it out. But that's up to Calvin Pitts and them to work out. But we're caught in the middle. But in the meantime, houses get torn down, people aren't, are unemployed, they're not learning their trade and we're standing right in the way of progress. And that should not happen.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other citizens?
Daryl Harrell.
I don't think he's here.
Because I don't have any meat with me to hang, okay? Hi, everybody. I hope you let me speak, since I usually do get to speak, but I have something very important to say. Disrespect. Think about that word. Think about it really hard. I was on Levin Street going south. I saw the most beautiful funeral I have ever seen. And very seldom do you see a horse and buggy drawing the casket, okay? Everybody was speeding by it, didn't pull over and it was something of disrespect for that person. No matter who the person is, you should respect that. Then I was going down Ninth Street, favorite street, and ambulance was going very, very fast. I assume he knew that it was a heart patient. And one guy decided to make a turn in front of it. That's a half a second that can save somebody's life that he had to give up. When you don't have respect for your first responders and not know how fast it has to get done and what you have to do for people that are sick or their house is burning down or a funeral, there's something wrong. There is no unity, as Ms. Haley said, about our people. We're all such individuals. We need to get together and, and make these people, other people realize that respect is for everybody, even the homeless, even the people that are helping the homeless and tell them thank you. And I do hope you all look at that word, disrespect, because it is, something is a powerful word and it can do harm or it can do good, is how you use that word. And I hope you all have a beautiful birth Friday, Good Friday and find all the eggs, maybe you might find the golden and be good. And God bless y'all.
Thank you.
And Mayor, thank you for what you explained about the housing, because Mr. Pitt did come over and do my mother's part of the house for him, for her. And I respect his work. It's very good, better than some of the work I've had in my house lately.
Is that it?
All the speakers, Mr. Chair.
And he exactly says.
Oh, sir.
We're out of here.
She sold us out. So. Hey, you had a rough night.
I actually was going to implement my little where you be saying do pass and actually give the number.
You did.
But that's too much.
All right.
I said, I don't know. Just too late. We do that in other places. This year, it's too much.